Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. On the 10th of June. I'm Charlotte Harris. I'm currently, but for a very brief time, the Chair of the Planning Board. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you this is a public meeting and it's being in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. So please take a minute to turn off your smartphones so that they're not ringing during the meeting. If you decide you want to speak during the meeting, please come to the microphone over here and give your name and the matter on which you wish to speak, so that you've identified yourself before you speak. We have a public comment period first, and the public comment period is only for matters that are not on the agenda. So if you're here for something that's on the agenda, public comment isn't the time that you want to be speaking. There'll be time for that later. Now, we'll proceed with the first thing on our agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to make a comment about something, a matter before the Planning Board now? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead with our meeting. The first thing on, we're just after an election, so the very first thing we're going to attend to is our own board reorganization. Each time there's an election, we have to rechoose the leadership of the board. So we're open to nominations?
I would like to nominate John Drooly, who's done a tremendous amount for our board over the years, and with the exception of being Chairman.
Thank you.
So I'd like to nominate him so that we get his brilliant service as our Chairman, if he will accept the nomination.
And I would like to nominate Mr. Fox.
Jim? Let's take it in order. You've been nominated. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
I'll second.
Are you seconding?
I'll second the nomination for John.
For John, okay. Jim, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there a second for Jim?
The position is for Chair of the Board?
Yes.
That was not clear.
It is for Chair. We're going Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk. We'll get there. So is there a second for Jim? There is no second. So we will call for a vote. All those who are in favor of John becoming the Chair?
Aye.
Opposed? John, you're the new Chair, and you're welcome here as soon as we finish the reorganization.
It's great. I didn't know you were going to do that. You've never, you've been interested before.
I wasn't.
It's what we need. It's good, it's good to have some new blood.
Is there a nomination for?
Oh, we'll do, yes, it's very needed. I'm delighted. Thank you very much, John, for being willing to do this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the confidence.
Nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Jim for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? Any other, I would like to nominate Pat Kerfoot for Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second. That's our vote.
Okay. Let's take them in order. If there aren't any other nominations, all in favor of Jim as Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
That would be two. All in favor of Pat as Vice Chair?
Aye.
That would be four. I think Pat, you're the Vice Chair.
Oh, I wasn't counting. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good. Now we'll take nominations for Clerk.
I would like to nominate Tom as Clerk Secretary.
I'll second that.
And a seconded. Any other nominations for Clerk? Hearing none. All in favor of Tom being the Clerk?
Aye.
Aye. And, and look, Pat is already the Vice Chair, so thanks for going on. And Paul, thank you very much for being Clerk for so long.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. So, John, this is yours.
Do I move over or stay here?
Yeah, let me know. Let's move. I'm going to take a short term notice from here. Oh. Thank you.
Congratulations. I think it's great.
Appreciate it.
I didn't know you were interested, but I think you'd be terrific at it.
We're going to find out.
I'm always here to give you the help.
I need, I need all the help I can get.
You can always impeach him.
So I know we start somewhere. Where do we start? Can we take the minutes from?
Yeah. Paul will have to do this because he's the one that reviewed them.
Thank you.
So start off with the minutes. Paul, the minutes for May 13th, 2025 meeting.
Mr. Chair, it sounds funny. You used to say Madam Chair. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of May 13th, 2025, as written.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. So the first hearing on our agenda tonight is Approval Not Required. Amir McElmott, is this a decision or?
It's an application for Approval Not Required. So the Board has provided large, full-size plans between each one of you. The applicant seeks to re-divide 955 and 961 Sandwich Road, as shown on the swap plan.
Okay.
And my recommendation is endorsement, as this plan shows requisite frontage in that zone of the district.
And the rest of requisite acreage.
That is not required in this situation, so ANRs are only frontage, but it does meet the minimum lot size as well.
So if they subdivided and the lot was, made it smaller, would still, the zoning would still stay the same?
As, as long as you meet the frontage requirements, yes. Again, you do an endorsement based on not considering it buildable. You don't make an assessment on that, nor do you make an assessment on zoning compliance. It's just frontage.
That's it. Okay, thank you. That clears me up.
So I move that the Board endorse the plan as presented to us without regard to buildability or zoning. Second.
Any discussion? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was for the ANR, Approval Not Required. Second hearing we have is Francis Wencheck, Trustee, Site Plan Review, Application to Construct an Attached Accessory Dwelling at 80 South View Way. Is someone here for the applicant?
This, Mr. Chairman, this is.
This is, we already had the hearing on it, right?
Right, correct. This is just a decision.
Bob usually reads things.
I'm sorry. Do I have that?
Okay, draft, June 10th, 2025. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Francis Wencheck for the construction of an attached two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 80 South View Way under Section 240, 12.2 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw. With the following findings and conditions. Findings, proposal general, the applicant is proposing to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling for an attached two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The principal dwelling is currently three bedrooms, which means the total bedroom count for the property with the ADU will be five bedrooms. The accessory dwelling unit proposed at 799 square feet will be 36.5% of the principal dwelling. Parking, the site plan shows room for parking for both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit, therefore complying with Section 240-9.10C and Section 240-14E of the zoning bylaw respectively. Butters and public comments, there were no letters of opposition received, nor comments made during the Board's public meeting. General finding, compliance with the ADU's in-site plan review bylaws. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section 290, 240, 9.1, and 240, 12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, plans shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if modifications of this decision is necessary. Two, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, butters or public right-of-way. Three, alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, the applicant shall see the Engineering Division for address assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this building for Section 99.1 of the Town Code. The project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the Building Code as determined by the Building Commissioner. Rental period shall be not less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Pursuant to Section 240, 12.2 of the zoning bylaw, this site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the Planning Board. The applicant shall contact the excesses office for inspection of the ADU prior to certificate of occupancy. Finally, the applicant shall obtain the required rental permit from the Health Department prior to renting the ADU.
Second.
Mr. Chair, before you go to a vote, may I just suggest amendment to the decision for standard condition number six, where it says rental period shall not be less than six months. That needs to be stricken from your decision based on the feedback that we've received from the Attorney General's Office on the ADU bylaw. So the condition would read, it would start at weekly, and it would say weekly slash monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on this?
So what's being deleted on that phrase?
Just the words rental periods shall not, shall be not less than six months.
Not less than six months.
And, yep. Strike that.
So we need to vote on the modification, and that's because of the AG's changes.
Can I just ask a question? Does that mean three months is okay?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
Yes.
That's important for me to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have the next hearing. The next hearing is for Carlos Santos. I'm sorry, script one.
Usalina?
Usalina Pereira?
Pereira.
Site Plan Review, Application to Construct an Attached Accessory Dwelling Unit at 15 Deepwood Drive.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, before you begin, Paul, or now Tom, has to read the notice into the record.
So this was published in the paper. The date was 5/9/25, and there are 35 abutters notified by regular mail.
This is what they're all here for.
Thank you. Representing the applicant?
Hi, so my name is Katja. Let me help my friend Usalina. She owns the house. So, so here is the site plan. She is, she did all the modifications to have the accessory bedroom upstairs, which is going to live with her son, and she's planning, like, she wants to rent the downstairs and have the apartment one-bedroom upstairs. So here is the basement floor plan, the main floor plan, second floor, which has the bedroom, family room. So the proposal, so, oh, there. Okay, so here is the second floor exterior stair proposal. Which would give accessory to the upstairs bedroom. So anyway, so I don't know if I can explain. I'm just asking if she wants to say something, and then I can do the interpretation, because it's her house. I'm here to help in her. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be here just to do the interpretation, but. Yeah, so they, she built the stairs outside, and she did all the modification that was required to have this apartment upstairs. The house has still three bedrooms, but now it's one upstairs and two downstairs. So pretty much is the same numbers of bedrooms, but now she has one apartment upstairs and two bedrooms downstairs.
Okay, understood. Any questions?
Looks as if it meets all the requirements very nicely, but there's a question about the parking.
Okay, yes, sure.
Is there enough parking for?
Yeah, so there is like two. Okay, yeah, the house has like a way to do like two driveways, one for, on the left that she can have like one, one driveway for one car, and for the downstairs, which has two bedrooms, already has like a driveway that can have like two cars parked.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, just a question. Do we have a site plan? We were supposed to do a site plan review here, right? So we should look at a site plan.
The site plan is this one here, I guess, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a smaller, oh, right here.
This one.
Shows expanded driveway.
Yeah, looks like there's four cars in that driveway. That's why I wanted to see it.
Yeah, and what she's planning just. Uh-huh, so, okay, she has like a picture here that shows like the driveway. Here? No, hold on. Right here shows that she has planned space for like four cars, I guess, yeah. On that picture. And this picture, yeah, she already, so she already has like a driveway for two, four cars, and she already started to building like a driveway next to the apartment, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be good for one car. See if it has more pictures here. I don't.
Any other questions?
I'd like the architectural design drawings, and very happy to see you have solar panels on the house.
Ah, solar panel, yes.
They're on there.
Yeah. So the solar panel. Yeah, she, she was the one that put the solar panel in the house, yeah.
Yeah, they're very, I'm glad to see that.
So do you want to see like, what do you mean? Sorry.
He's complimenting her.
Ah, okay, all right, okay.
Any other questions? Any public comment? You have to state your name and come up to the podium, please. Yes, and your name and.
Okay, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Steve Dennison. I live at 12 Deepwood Drive, directly across from this property, and I just have a couple of questions that I'm concerned about, because two years ago, we had a fire there at that house, and the fire department came, the police department came, and it was a fire. They put a washing machine out behind the house in the winter with a dryer, and it, the hose froze, sprayed all over the washer and dryer, started the house on, it started on fire. So they came and blocked the street off across from my house. I went out, and there was a tenant there at the time, and they pulled the meter, they shut, the town came and shut the water off, and they went in the house, they had to, at that time, they shut everything off. They went inside the house, and there were all three floors had illegal apartments in them. There was, each floor had two apartments in each one, and they were legally done, so the fire department told the tenants that they would have to vacate the premises, okay? And since then, the house, there was two bedrooms on the, on the top floor, one bedroom on the bottom floor. I've been there 44 years, and I knew, I've known all the owners, and that's how it was set up. And now, there's tenants on the main floor. They, I've already changed it around to two bedrooms on the, on the main dwelling. They have tenants in there now. They've already been rented. They've been living there since November of last year, okay? They've done all the work. The work was done. I have pictures of all the work when it was done. It was, the stairs were done in January, the door was, all renovations were done. That existing photo hasn't been like that for over a year, because they've already done all the work. And then, May 2nd, Eversource asked to use my driveway, and they upgraded the, they upgraded the electrical to 200 amp to, so three floors could have power. So the basement, the main floor, and the top floor. And I asked him what was going on. He goes, he goes, the owner called me to have the service done. And I says, well, who's doing the work? And he goes, I don't know. I, I don't get involved with it, right? And so they changed it 200 amp service. And the driveway they did on a Saturday, they knocked my mailbox, I got pictures of it and stuff, and they put a driveway across the front of the, the front of the house, and the park in there on, I got pictures. At any given time, there's six, eight cars there, you know? And it's being one car in the driveway is like, you know, that's the, that's the picture of the existing. That's what, that's what the rampant stuff looks like now. And this is out the front window of my house.
If you want to give us those pictures, we'll.
Sure, sure, I can give them to you.
Now, is the current owner the same owner?
Same owner right, right now. You can take a look at all of them. Is it where I?
Because one of the things that we're finding through this process is apartments that were illegal are coming before us to become legal.
No, I'm all for it, to put it up, but just do it legally and have it permitted and done right.
Right.
But had to have, do it illegally and not have any permits. Nobody's ever
Right.
inspected that place. I live there. I'm retired.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no inspectors gone there, and, you know, and it's like, it was like the septic, I had a problem with the septic system. I was there when they built the house, and there's a pit, septic pit, which I thought was illegal in this town now, and to, and it was approved by the Health Department due to it was a three-bedroom, and having a septic pit in this town is, is, you're supposed to have a field.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so the pit alone is, and it's already been signed off by the Health Department. I got the referral right here, you know, to go to the Planning Board. And I thought the Planning Board was that we had to come to the Planning Board, and they were coming with plans to do the work to get a, to get a building permit. All the work has already been done. And where's the permits? I would like to see the permits. I've looked up online, and it says you can do online in the permits here in the town of Falmouth, and I don't see where, where anything was inspected and who did the work.
Yeah, so, but with this coming before us, they, they have to have it inspected. They, they have to follow the, the Building Code. They have to pull permits, so.
I just want to bring this up. This is, these are my concerns, you know, I, I haven't seen anything transpire.
Yeah.
I haven't, you know, I mean, you know, I was, I was kind of put back by the Eversource guy saying there was no, you know, there's nobody licensed, nobody talked English there. So he goes, I doubt their license, so, the supervisor for Eversource.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, we just had a fire two years ago here, and the town of Falmouth put down, it was, you know, they were there for six hours. They shut the street down and pulled the, the, the meter was pulled, the town shut the water off for six months, and then we have tenants back in there again. Without, you know, to, to have it done correctly would be, you know, I mean, I would like to, I'd just be feel safe living in my house to know that this work has been done correctly.
Yeah, and the basement cannot be living space, so it's only the main floor and the second floor. So that's something that the Building Commissioner will also take note of.
And I, and I thought too, with, like, the driveway, that they, they installed a driveway called, cut across the front of the house, that you had to have a curb cut or, you know, you can't just park cars in the front of your house, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, that's, curb cuts are the DPW.
You know, I mean, that would be a, you know, I mean, that's another, that was just my concerns, you know? I'm all for it, you know, you do ADU right?
Yeah.
I think, I think I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I'm all for it, but just do it correctly, you know?
And I think, in order to add the driveway and do the curb cut, that, does that come at the time when they apply for an address? Is that something they review?
Yes, it likely will, yes.
Okay.
And the, and the septic, you know, it was just like, you know, I mean, the septic's against the, you know, a pit.
Yeah.
Falmouth is.
And.
Done when, I did, I had to change my house over, you know, I'm a single guy, you know, I live there.
Yeah.
And I did mine over.
And that's the Board of Health, they'll.
But they signed off on it already.
They'll review on, on this one existing?
Yeah, it's right here. I printed everything out on the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
They.
They haven't.
They haven't signed, no, they haven't signed off on it yet, so.
Not on this application.
Not on this application.
Again, whatever you want to, we'll take and review it, whatever document you have.
Yeah, this was, this was the line, it says right here, the septic is approved for three bedrooms. That was signed off by the Health Department, had no comment.
There's no signature.
Oh, yeah, it does say that it's suitable for three bedrooms.
I think he's brought up some serious concerns. It, it's not supposed to have anybody living in the basement. The documentation that we were given for the meeting shows that the Health Department hasn't signed off on this. There's no, it was sent to them, but there's no comment returned.
It's 1986.
So I think there are things that we need before we could consider this.
Ah, the site plan doesn't show that driveway going across the front of the yard.
It does not, no.
So how can we approve a site plan when they're showing pictures that's something different? Is, is that really a driveway going across the front of the yard?
Right there, it's in the picture, right there.
Is it paved?
No, it's just stone. It's just, it's just dirt. There's other people that want to, they're going to come up, the abutters are all concerned of the same concerns I have, so.
I think we need the site plan, if that in fact is a driveway, it should be shown on the site plan.
Yeah. And so.
Let's hear from the other.
Yeah, just a comment. We got other things. We got more to go here.
Yeah.
So again, anything you want, you want to leave if you're all set?
No, that's, I guess there's other people that want to come up. Let them talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hello, everybody. Before I start talking.
Please give your name.
Yes, my name is Dimitri. I live on 18 Deepwood Drive. Before I start talking, I would like to apologize because my voice is loud. Some people, they think that I'm fighting with somebody, or some people, they think that something else. Please forgive me about this, because back in the old country, we used to talk loud. We used to talk by hand, and we used to have a glass of wine on the hand. So I'm not here to against nobody. I live right across from the lady's house over here. A year ago. A year ago, or two years ago, when I came back from my trip overseas, my neighbors over there, they informed me that the house across the street, it was on fire, it was chaos. Lucky that I wasn't there to see what happened, it was at midnight, everything happened. The police department over there, the fire department over there, and eventually down the road, I found out that health department, they shut down the whole house, nobody can live in the house, and the reason, because it was people living down in the basement, it was turned to three mini apartments down the basement, people living in the kitchen on the first floor, and people living on two bedrooms on the first floor, and more people living on the second floor, I believe it was one or two bedrooms up there. I never been in the house, and I don't know how the house is. But I know that three Brazilian people, who there was renting in there, they came across to my house to ask me if I can offer them anything to do for some money. There was illegal, all of them, renting a bed, a thousand dollars per bed, three beds in one room. I guess the lady over here, she had a bank on the side, because according to some Brazilian people that I have spoke to, when they work in the house, she's doing the same thing over in Martha's Vineyard. They said that she has an illegal painting company.
So we, we have to stick with what's in front of us here, this house?
Okay. May I ask over here, please, who is the building manager here, the building department manager?
That would be Mr. Street, and Falmouth is complaint-driven, so we just can't go decide we're going to go visit a site or something.
Okay.
A complaint has to be registered, in this case, it would be with the building inspector.
Yep.
And if it's a health thing, you go to the health department, and they would then investigate what, what is going on. And if they went and they found that there were too many people, or if it wasn't sanitary, or whatever the situation was, would be, they could, they could effect some change to that.
Okay.
So, it, it doesn't come back to us at all.
Yeah.
For enforcement, the enforcement comes from the different agencies within the town, whether it be the building inspector, or the, the town manager, or whatever, the health department, so.
I'm going to speak especially now the building department. I'm not trusting whoever is in there. And to, I'm sorry to say here, I haven't met anybody of you, but I'm not trusting anybody of you either. Because before, anybody from the town, they come to apply for a permit for something, is already signing off. I've been told by my neighbor, another neighbor, because my actually property line is inside my neighbor's living room. And I don't want to know who give them the goddamn permit to build a house, that it was no house there, it was a shit, and my neighbors, they know about that? I live on eighteen Deepwood Drive, anybody have the guts and have a, come and have a look, they can come over and I tell them what's going on there.
Hold on, listen, we're, we're talking about this application.
Right. I'm trying to say that the, the, the building department, they sign off already about this lady's, what she has to do over her house. This is what I be told over here two weeks ago, when we came over here for the meeting, but apparently it was canceled. Whatever is happening now, already you guys sign off, it's done.
No, we haven't.
We have not signed off on anything.
This is what I be told by someone who's working for the town hall.
This is a new application, and we're going to work it through our.
It's a new application, but the job is done already, sir.
We understand, we've heard that testimony.
And especially it was done in the hurry, weekend, Saturday and Sunday, seven o'clock in the morning, five or six guys from Brazil coming to work, seven o'clock in the morning, banking seven o'clock in the morning on Sunday, for what? To put the four-by-four into the ground and make the stairs fast and go. And then the next weekend, to come and open the hole on the wall, so they can put the door over there, so they can make an apartment up there. It's illegal to make an apartment on the house? It's supposed to be a single-family house. Deepwood Drive is not two-family or three-family, it's a single-family house.
That's what this application is about, to try to legalize what they have there.
Okay.
And it will, and it will.
My neighbors over there, they live right next to it.
And they're.
They've been complaining to me and everybody else about it.
And they're going to get a chance to talk to us also.
I understand, but I'm, I'm saying over here already, I'm upset. Like I said before, my actually property line is inside my neighbor's living room.
This neighbor?
No, not this lady here, right next door.
And that has nothing to do with this application?
I understand that, but I'm saying, that's why I'm not trusting the building department or anybody in the town hall here.
Okay.
Okay?
Understood.
This is ridiculous, what's going on. I've been told personally, two weeks ago, when we came over here, that this application over here has been signed by the town already.
It has not.
And we wasting our time coming over here, you said, already the lady, she spent eighty thousand dollars to do her job, and the thing is done already.
Okay, we, we understand what you said, you said it multiple times now. Do you have anything new?
Yes, something new I have is that the gentleman who built the house next door to mine, and my property line is inside his, his living room.
Is that their house?
No, it's my house, yes.
That's not a part of us.
You know something? They told me that somebody put the cash in the envelope, and they passed it.
It's not.
To the previous building inspector.
Okay.
And that's why all this is done.
Thank you. Anyone else want to have a comment about this application?
You go. Everything that I said would, would go over there.
Okay.
She wants to talk a little bit.
Well, we may, we may have some questions here. Yes, Jim?
Wow. Jed, I think I need to.
Someone with their hand up. Yes, sir. Come to the board here, please, and, and your name?
I'm here for my brother, who lives directly across the street.
The address, please.
Pardon?
The address.
On Deepwood Drive, right, right across the street from this lady here.
Seventeen? Seventeen, thank you.
Deepwood Drive, and the only question I have is, can you have people renting in your house without occupancy permit?
No.
No. No one can live in a house without an occupancy permit.
Was there ever an occupancy permit given on this, this house here?
That would be a question for the building inspector.
This is where I was going to go, because I think this is important. I believe that they have changed the egress, their building permit is going to require a certificate of occupancy. And at the same time, they should have the smoke detectors checked, and then when you do that, in, in real estate, the fire department comes through the house, and they go down in the basement, and if they see people living down there, you're dead, you can't do it. They, they make sure that everything is safe. If you have people living in a basement and you can't get out, it's an unsafe condition, and when you, it's supposed to be when you file the permits, and you file the process, these things all get caught, and this will happen, because they're going to need a new occupancy permit to make this, right now, it's still a single-family home.
So then it wouldn't be pulled to, to rent it out to anybody else?
They've done it illegally.
Now, now we're in a new process.
Yeah.
Okay.
They cannot rent it.
The new process will inspect every phase of their home.
Okay. This is a single-family home, right now, and it will be until, until it gets inspected.
Okay.
There, there's also building code issues that it's, you just can't make a second floor an apartment when it was built as a single-family home, because the insulation and fire protection is different when you have one unit on top of the other. And when I built two-family and three-family homes, I had to put double sheet rock on the ceilings, the doors had to be hour rated, and the building inspector came and checked every one of those things, and the fire department comes and checked all those things. This has to be done on this house, before they rent it, and if they're renting it now, that's illegal, they can't do it.
Okay. I just wondered about the permits, because the, some of the inspectors, and I'm not going to put names or put it on anybody else, some of them, I've been told that the town, they're too busy, so they don't have time to check everything, and a lot of times.
I got to just say something, I work with the building inspectors all the time, and that's not the case. Some of my friends are building inspectors, I know some new ones, they're very good, and they're very diligent people, and I, and what the allegations that I've heard, I don't really want, they should be stricken from the record unless you have some proof, because you're not supposed to do that at a public meeting.
Right.
And it's not the truth, we have, I think we have great staff and great people, and if you, if you can't even name their name, then you shouldn't be saying these things about them, because say it to the face, it's not right, what I heard said.
I can mention the name, sir.
You got to come up here.
Okay.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait.
You've had enough for a while, sorry.
No.
You don't want to talk about it now, right? The previous inspector who was here, that, I don't, is it?
Sir.
You want me to talk?
Charlotte talks, oh, sorry.
Charlotte.
We're trying to have a civil meeting.
Yes.
And this has become different from that.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. We've been told things that bring this whole project into question, and I'd like to know what is the responsibility of communication between this board and the building department and the health department? Because the papers that we have in front of us for this project do not show that the health department has signed off on it, do not show that these are occupied places, or they're approved places. What is our responsibility now to communicate this to the correct authorities? Do we have a responsibility?
Well, if I may, I think what you would probably be best to do is to have the applicant respond to some of the questions, or some of the items that the abutters have brought up. The, one of the items that you may want to talk about is the basement condition. Is there an intent to have living space in the basement? If there's not, we can write it into your eventual decision as a condition, that there will be no habitable space in the basement. The egress stairs, et cetera, so allow the applicant to respond to some of those items, especially the driveway. We can then put that into your eventual decision, which then gets communicated to the building department and the health department, who will eventually do inspections on this property.
Mr. Cornoch, could, could I ask you, is it inappropriate for us to ask if these are occupied units now?
It's a bit outside your purview, because your, your responsibility here is to hear the application for an accessory dwelling unit, and to put conditions and findings in place for that application. If you're concerned about residents or renters in the other floors, you could put that in, into a finding, and that will be communicated to the building commissioner.
I just feel we should have some concern for the safety of that dwelling.
Right.
That's Jim.
Do you have a building permit for that stairwell we saw?
This is for the applicant now?
Yeah, yeah. You do have a building permit?
We're going to ask for some questions now.
Do we have, can we see it?
Okay, I will do the interpretation what she said to me right now. So she said that she didn't know that she was bothering so many neighbors around, and she wants to say sorry, before she didn't know how was the situation, of course, it's her house, and that's the reason she's here, to make things work the correct way.
Okay.
That's the reason she has been building, coming to the town so many times, asking what is the correct way to go ahead, because she doesn't want to do wrong things, so that's the reason she's here. And everything that she has been doing at the house has been doing under the permit that you guys allowed to do. So.
So our question is, like the stairs on the outside of the building that were built, did she have a permit for that, and was it inspected?
They have a permit, she gave it to the outside.
Can you show the picture again?
Yes, she does. It is here? Okay, so it's.
No, it's, it's not in the, in the.
It's not here?
No, but.
She has it in her phone.
Did I? If we did get a permit for that, there's no findings.
I can verify that a permit was issued for the stairs and the door.
Do you have permits for that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think she has a permit for the stairs.
Yes, I have, but that.
That permit was issued on December 31st, 2024.
So we, we have a copy of the, the permit for the stairs?
Yeah.
2024.
So, anyway, so I'm here with my friend, I know, as she did some, some things before, I think you were guys saying that someone was staying in a basement, but no one has been staying in a basement, right? Yes, used to be, but that's the reason she's here, to make better. Sometimes people can make mistakes, but sometimes people like, can come and just, she's doing all under the permit, she, 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 she doing things that appropriate for the town, for the neighbors, and she just want to do better, you know? If she can't do that, so it's good.
Just address it to us, please.
Do you guys want to see that?
We, we have a copy of it.
I already have a copy.
We do. Yes, thank you.
Okay, she said that. Yeah, she said that everything that she has been doing right now, it's under the permit.
Okay.
You know, and, and what else, what else she needs to keep in doing, or she needs to modify, or, you know, so, she's a Brazilian, in Brazil, we used to buy a property, and then you can build, building many, many bedrooms, you can build another house right next to our house, you buy a land, and then you can build, so it's a sort of different culture. So that's the reason she was doing that, but she didn't know, so she came to the town, trying to understand how things go.
So we understand that, and we're, we're in this process now.
Yes.
And one of the questions that came up is the picture of the truck parked in the front yard, like a second driveway. So if, if she's going to do that, she has to revise this plan, what they call the site plan, to show a second driveway, and that may require a curb cut permit from the town.
Okay.
If she, if she's not going to do that, if that's not going to happen, then this drawing is going to be okay.
Okay.
If she's not going to use a second driveway.
Okay. You said you made a second, a second stoppage of car. If you don't make a second stoppage of car.
I believe, I believe the driveway, from my experience, is an, needs a special permit from the zoning board to have a non-pituminous driveway on the site. You can't put shells, you can't put dirt, you can't put gravel, unless you get a special permit from the ZBA.
Okay, but I'm explaining that without a permit, they cannot do that.
Right.
So if she wants to do it, then she'll have to put it on this plan, and we'll go through the process with her.
And I believe we have to refer to the zoning board of appeals as well.
Okay.
To make sure that meets zoning, because I, I believe, I believe you can't put in a gravel or shell driveway without a special permit.
Well, there's a lot of places in town where they have circular driveways.
So, okay, so.
And let's, let's just stick with this.
So that, it's the driveway that she cannot have this, right? That, what are you saying? What it is right now, it's not supposed to have it.
Is that a dirt driveway?
Yeah.
And there's a paved driveway also?
Yes, right here, this is the paved one, right next.
She cannot have the, she will not be able to have the dirt driveway unless she goes through another process.
Okay, she didn't know that, so, okay, she just can't cancel that.
So if she's not going to use that.
You don't have to do this here, because you already have this. Okay.
If she's not going to use that, then we'll just stay with this plan. If she is going to use that, we have to have a new plan, and it'll have to have a permit for her to use it.
You don't have to do this.
And that section should be landscaped.
Okay, so, she just gonna, not having this.
So she's going to relandscape it?
Yeah, she needs to relandscape it, because she put like, all the landscape, it's supposed, yeah, so she.
Okay.
But she's a, cut back the driveway.
All right. You have some.
Okay. That's not a problem for her. But she, she was thinking that she could do a landscape and driveway there.
I'll get to this side soon, but we're working our way down the line here. Yes, Charlotte?
Okay, I'll be quick. Um, two things. One, I'm wondering, we, we make site plans when we have a lot of questions. We make site visits. And I'm wondering if this doesn't call for that. There are a lot of open questions here. And I wonder if it would be appropriate to just end the hearing on this issue now until we get, uh, completed documents that have been signed off on by all of the required prior reviews, particularly the health department this time.
So you're gonna move for a continuance?
Uh, yes, I guess that would be the right thing to do, to get a continuance for, and give us time to make a site visit to just see for ourselves.
How does anybody else feel about site visit?
It's an easy place to drive to and-
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Tom?
I'd like to see a site visit as well.
And do we wanna, we can do that individually as opposed to making it a?
Um, it might be better to set a date because there, it's a close neighborhood and to have a lot of, you know, they're not gonna recognize us or our cars. I think it might be better if-
If we do as a group, we have to, we have to notice as a-
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you do, you, we will post it just for clarity's sake. There isn't a requirement because as Town Council has explained before, when you're doing a site visit, it is part of your job, and therefore you do not need to post it. It wouldn't be a violation of the open meeting law, but we will, just, just for clarity's sake.
So, so my question is, the reason for the site visit, is it to see this driveway removed?
I think there are questions about what's going on in the basement. There's a photograph that shows-
As a site visit, I don't know if we're allowed to go into the structure.
There's the landscaping issue, there's the driveway and parking issue.
Yes, Jim?
I believe the, uh, impact of the extra driveway would require, um, extra landscaping. I mean, we can approve it, but normally when we do something like this, we have some kind of landscaping, buffer, screening.
Yeah, condition it.
We have conditions, and I think that's one of the reasons I agree with Charlotte, that we should go and, and get an understanding of what's really going on there.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I, I don't mind the site visit, but I, I just want everybody to understand, we're not gonna go inside the structure.
No, 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 I'm not gonna look at the landscaping.
So we're just gonna go and look at the driveway that she says she's gonna eliminate.
And possible where relandscaping and maybe screening goes. Because one of the things in the initial, uh, bylaw that we stressed a lot was screening the vehicles that were gonna be at, uh, the accessory unit. So that's something that we need to revisit.
Okay.
So it may mean extending the driveway or widening it or, or something to that effect.
So before we take a vote on that, let me see if there's questions at this end.
Yeah.
I've got comments, okay?
Any questions for us, though? No, okay, comments?
Okay. I am wondering why the basement problem couldn't be solved by simply requiring that the bathroom facilities be removed.
Yeah, that's on my condition.
Okay. Just remove in the basement the bathroom facilities. That's one thing. And we would have to say, no occupancy.
You're allowed to have a bathroom, though. You're allowed to have a bathroom in, in a basement. You are.
Okay, but the allegation was-
I understand, but you, we, they get approved all the time. That's the hard part of this job.
It's my comment.
Yeah.
Okay, whether it can be worked or not, I don't know. But there's so much heartburn, and I understand why it looks distinctly unsafe to have anybody living down there.
Well, it just gets approved. It will go through the, through the building department.
Oh, yeah.
And it will be conditioned that no living, no bedrooms, no apartment in the basement.
Yeah.
And then the enforcement is up to the building department.
I understand that.
Just so, just so everyone in the neighborhood knows. And, and like Bob said, we are a town where the neighbors help us enforce the bylaws.
Except a lot of them won't put their name to a complaint because you have to put your name to a complaint.
We've had a few, we've had a few names here tonight, so.
Yeah, we have. Okay, the other thing is too, I'm not particularly, um, energized to go just see a driveway that we've just done before by saying this is what we require, that it can just be, uh, have topsoil put on it, landscaping put on, and we also can require some shielding by shrubs of parking. So I'm not sure that it's a good use of my time to go out and do a site visit just to see a dirt driveway that we say, get rid of it and landscape it.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
I don't see going to see the driveway is gonna do anything at all. We can't go in the house. That's not our purview at all. But maybe the purview of the Board of Health.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tom?
Whether we go as a group or individually, I know I'm gonna drive out there on the way.
I think it may behoove you to just get a sense, a better sense, at least for myself, for typing up a decision on the layout of the first floor, who's gonna be living on the first floor. So my understanding is that the apartment is the second floor.
Yes.
And the first floor will be occupied by the homeowner?
Rented. Yeah, it's, it's rented. So she was, you know-
Okay, so it's, the first floor is rented, as is the second floor? Or the second floor is going to be-
No, no, the second floor it's not. It's, it's just empty. The basement, just like the, 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 the first floor with the two bedrooms, it's rented.
Okay.
We still waiting for the proof to, to-
Let, let's, please. Any, any conversation has to be at the podium.
My gosh. So, uh, so she's waiting to approve, the total approval, and then she has, can have the one bedroom apartment upstairs. Nothing in, in, is in the basement. You guys can go there, open the basement and see, nothing's there. The first floor, which has two bedrooms, that's a rent in person, which he's correct about that. And upstairs, it's empty, waiting for the proof for the one bedroom apartment.
Okay.
A set piece?
Yes.
Yes.
May I answer your question?
This is my question.
Okay, so what's left for us to discuss then is the site visit. Would you be comfortable going on your own?
Yeah.
Then we can make recommendations at the next meeting? Are you, are you okay with that, Charlotte?
Uh, I am okay with that.
Individually?
I don't think it's optimal, but I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I, I have another reason for thinking that the site plan is an important, the site visit is an important thing for us about this site plan. One of the things that was said is that these things have been happening there that are upsetting to the neighborhood, and nobody, in some official capacity, has appeared there as far as they have said to actually see it. And I feel that we should.
Well, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go as an individual. I, I do that a lot. I also Google Earth a lot of sites as well. Give me a sense of the lay of the land. And I don't know whether this means we are gonna have a motion for continuance until the site plan is determined, what it is, whether there's gonna be an additional part to the driveway or, and what the landscaping is, because we obviously need a site plan that's gonna show that. So when we have something to enforce, if they submit a, a site plan that has landscaping on it and it's not done, then that permit can be revoked.
Okay.
And what is the, uh, the process if they find that they're in violation of our decision? What happens then? Is the occupancy permit revoked or are they fined or?
Typically, the first step is a letter from the building department to the homeowner indicating violations that were identified as well as, um, a timeline for rectification. If that isn't rectified within a certain time period, then the building department would take the next step. Typically, another letter indicating a fine schedule that would start at a certain time and end at a certain time. So the building department will continue to just follow up with the homeowner to make sure that compliance is achieved.
Yes, Jim?
I would like to see the site plan redone. And I'd like to see a buffer planted along the border with the neighbors with where they're asking for an extra wide driveway. And normally, when we do an ADU, we take into consideration the impact it has on the neighborhood and require buffering. And I think this is a perfect application for a, a row of, of trees or hedges or something to block that, to totally screen it from the neighbor.
So I, are you-
That's it. I'd like, but I'd like to see it on the plan.
Okay, I think what Bob has to say is a very good idea, that we do our own site visits, and then we come, we, we extend this hearing and have, uh, the next hearing, we can voice our opinions of what should be on the site plan, and then let the applicant correct the site plan to whatever we, we think is required. And then we can continue the hearing from there.
Okay.
The process. And I want everyone in this, in this room to understand that everyone on this board is an elected official, and we care very deeply about your neighborhood. We care very deeply about her rights and everyone in this town. And, uh-
Nor for myself.
Well, you can have, everyone's allowed their opinion.
Of course, yes.
And, and I shouldn't be, I, if you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not- I'm not, I'm not gonna have an argument with you.
He's supposed to be up here, he's out of words.
I'm just talking with you.
We're not talking like this.
Do you mind if I go to the podium?
Yes, sir. And, and your name again, please.
Something that you haven't spoken about before?
My name is Dimitri again. I live on 18 Deepwood Drive. I'm not here to have a fight with anybody. I don't know the lady here.
No, but what you wanna say, please say to us.
The reason that I'm so, I'm so bitter about the building department is with what I saw years ago, given a permission to my neighbor to build a house there without, without a permit. Where the guy came to me, said to me, said, "Oh, I went under the grandfather laws, and I built a three bedroom house." What three bedroom house? It was a shit over there.
So this is something for a lawyer to-
This is not for us, but what, what you can do-
Because, you know, I'm ready, I'm ready to call the Attorney General with my lawyer, go to the Channel 5 in Boston and have the town manager with me of Falmouth over here and talk about it. Because, I mean, we live on the single home, we, road over there, single family homes.
Yes, thank you.
The lady over here now, she's creating a, an apartment with separate entrance to the side to go to the second floor. I have nothing against the lady. I don't know her. She doesn't know me.
Okay, we, okay.
But I wanna know for my own purposes, true. Is it legal?
She pulled a permit and it was inspected, that's it.
That was it?
And the state, and the state allows it now.
According to my-
And you probably have the building department address it with them. We are not the building department.
Okay, according to my information, the house was shut down by the health department, by the fire department. How the property is being rented on the first floor, according to my neighbors, they don't have any approval from the health department.
Go to the building department and ask them these questions.
No, I'm gonna go to the, to the Attorney General in Boston.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? You have to come to the podium again, please. And your name again, please.
Steven Dennison.
No, you have to say it so people at home can hear you. Because this is televised.
Hey, Steve Dennison. I live at 12 Deepwood Drive. I just wanna know if, with the planning board, when you have a review and you get the plans, do you have to do the way, does the way it work? You have to approve the plans before you get a permit?
Yes.
So how can permits be issued before the plans were approved?
We have, we have to review the plans and the process.
Yeah.
We have to approve it. Then she, the applicant has to get a building permit from the building department.
That's, because I looked up on the, on the, on the website, and it shows the procedures, that you guys approve the plan first. Everybody approves it, then they go to the building department.
Yes.
Then they're, but if it's already, if the work has already been done, right?
That's the building department's purview. So at, at the building department, they'll go through the, the electric department, the plumbing department, the health department, the fire department, building inspectors, it's a whole process.
That's af, that's after you approve your permit?
That's if it gets approved here first.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to, wanted to know because I just wanted everything done, done safely due to the fact of the fire. And I just, I mean, I live across the street. And I don't, and a safety reason, I am not comfortable right now. And that's the, I am all for an ADU to put it on the level. I am all for it. I like, I think it's great, but for safety, just don't do it. I just want it to be done right.
As I said to the previous, um, gentleman from the audience, go to the building department and ask them these questions.
Okay.
Because they, they could not, if there was a fire there, they could not occupy that without some kind of an inspection.
Yeah. Will, will we be notified if you have a continuance for the next meeting?
You're gonna hear, you're gonna hear it in a few minutes. You won't have to, no, you won't be getting notified, will you?
The only time you'll know is by attending the meeting. So they're gonna continue to a certain date. Everyone, listen, come back for that date.
Okay.
Tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna do that date tonight.
I appreciate it.
I just have another comment for anyone that's interested in building permits. It's a different town right now. Every single permit that's issued for every single property for the last two or three years is online. And you could go to Permanize, you could look at when it was applied for and when it was closed out, and you don't, and you can verify whether they have it or not just by going online, putting in their, their address, and get a list of all the permits. And if they don't have them, they don't show up. You can, it's called Permanize, and you can all look it up and see. It's public information.
But any, any questions you have, go to the building department. They are very efficient and very professional.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing on 15 Deepwood Drive.
Second.
And would we have a date, Jim?
It would be June 24th.
June 24th of this year or next year?
This year.
This year, okay.
Does that give the applicant time to have a new site plan?
Have time to do our site visit.
Well, it's time for the site visit, but if it's continued to the, later in June, does she have time to get a new site plan for us to look at?
It's gonna be at that meeting that we're gonna determine what the site plan needs.
Correct.
So, and so they'd be coming back again.
Everybody understand, June 24th, 2025. Right back here. And we'll continue this hearing. Does the applicant have any, any other questions, sir? Does she have any other questions before we close this hearing or extend this hearing?
No. Said no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.[1631.94] So.
Next.
Next. Trial by fire.
Holy smoke. Good job.
She started off like that, yes.
Jamie right here.
Yes. Okay, I've lost my, I've lost my sheet.
And that's septic system is.
Our next hearing.
Every, every one of them is, it's done that way. Honeycomb.
And they can still stay like that?
As long as they pass inspection. When you get the septic, huh?
Okay, so.
They condemn it right there.
Our next hearing is Carlos Santos' site plan review application to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit at one sixteen Jamie Lane.
Good.
And is there anyone here for the applicant to make a presentation?
No.
Oh, I say nor, I'm sorry. This is my first time, so I'm, I'm ahead of myself sometimes.
Mr. Chairman, that was.
I'm looking at someone, yes, sir.
You got any notice on this?
Yeah, it was published in The Enterprise on May ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Thirty-five of butters mailed by regular mail.
Thank you. Thirty, thirty-five of butters, excellent. And for the applicant, please. And, and your name, please.
My name is Jim Graven. I was the designer who did the plans for this ADU. And with me is the homeowner.
We have this, the plan up, up top here.
You can use the mouse to scroll down and the floor plans are just below it. Just pull up the tray below.
Oh, okay. Okay, so.
And just explain to us what you'd like to do, please.
Okay, so basically, what's going on is the split-level ranch is there. They would like a permit to have the lower level of the split, of the split-level ranch. Done as an apartment. Two bedrooms?
Yeah, so the, the septic is for four. I only have three bedrooms in the house. So I'll put in two downstairs. I'm gonna eliminate one upstairs. I'm gonna have two upstairs and two upstairs. It's already a full finished basement. When I bought the house, it was already everything downstairs. So all I have to do is get the permits to get everything done.
And for the record, your name, please.
Bellini Feria.
Okay, thank you. So you're saying that the, the work we see on the plan is already done?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay.
And in, the plans, I don't, they're not a.
Scroll up. Just scroll up. Instead of down. Keep going.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so this, this is the basement level. Has the two means, means of egress. And on the second floor. This is, this bedroom, which was existing, is being made into a den with a five-foot case opening, no closet. So that they're able to have the two bedrooms.
So this, it remained a three-bedroom house, is what you're saying?
So it, it, four bedrooms. So two, two down and two on the, on the first floor.
And the septic is already a four-bedroom septic?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any questions?
Is there a kitchen showing up there?
Uh, yep, there's a, right, the kitchen here for the, for the basement apartment and right below the one on the first floor.
Ms. Charlotte?
I'm, I'm not understanding something. There's a note here saying there's an open permit dated nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-one, so four years ago. With a notation from apparently the health department, must not use the finished space in basement as bedrooms. But that appears to be part of the plan to use the finished space in the basement as bedrooms. Is there a basement below that?
No.
No.
So.
I think that may have been probably before the, the accessory dwelling. Was, was allowed or just based on the fact that they hadn't filed for a permit to do so. But which is obviously being done now.
That would make some sense, Jed.
I looked through our system. I could not find that open permit from two thousand twenty-one. And I looked into the building department module as well as the health module. I could not find evidence of that. I can follow up with both the building commissioner and the health agent after the meeting. But like I said, I wasn't able to locate that.
And to verify that it's a four-bedroom septic.
Correct. The board, or the health agent did submit a referral confirming that it's a four-bedroom septic.
Okay.
And so they comply with the ADU bylaw.
Well, that may have been part of the reason why it said not to have the finished basement in the basement. They didn't wanna exceed the bedrooms. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I have a question. That's an open stairwell, it just goes up to the upstairs?
Yeah, you go upstairs and you go downstairs.
There's no door separating the units?
There is.
There is?
Yeah, there's, it's noted on here that the, that, that, that be a, a common area. So it's, so that it's, it's a, it's a common area, so.
Yeah, I see the door.
Definitively separate the apartment from the main area of the house.
I didn't, there it is, I see it. I just barely see it there now, okay.
Yeah, there were, there were some pictures also of, of the interior, but I can't see them on, on here. But that, it is notated on there. It's met with the building inspector and went over that specifically.
Is there a dumpster still on the site?
Yes.
So I don't know of any residents that would allow a dumpster on, on the property.
It's a, it's a four-foot. You're allowed to have a four-foot.
Can you just speak into your microphone, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're allowed to have four-foot dumpster in the premises without any permits.
Okay, so that's something that should be on the site plan too. I don't see it.
No, it's not marked.
Because they're supposed to be screened and not visible from the street. So, yeah, there's, I think there's a lot of issues with the site plan in this as well.
Name of the dumpster?
Yeah, the dumpster.
Yeah, they, they went out there and they called me on the phone. They said, they talked about the dumpster and the guy said, just keep it ten feet away from the neighbor's house and you should be fine. That was like two, three months ago.
Is that, let me see, is that the building department?
Yeah, the building department went down because somebody made a complaint and he was just like, just keep it ten feet in the middle of your driveway, you should be fine. So I took away from the neighbor's house and put it in the middle of my driveway. Basically, for me, I don't, I don't wake out to take out the trash, so I need to throw out the trash. And I pay to get it picked up every week, so it's not like.
Yeah. I wouldn't want a dumpster at my, my house.
Anytime I got a dumpster, I had to go to the fire department, get a permit, costs ten bucks.
Yeah, if it's, I already, sorry. But I called the fire department also and talked to them. They said anything bigger than four foot, you need a permit. Anything less, you don't have to call, you don't have to do anything. You can just get it in pretty, as long as inside your yard. I already called everybody that was to call.
It's a four-yard dumpster.
Yeah, it's the four. And anything above four, you need a permit, you need to go to the fire department, everything like that. Anything below, you don't need it. Since the guy came over last time, I went, called everybody to find out and everybody told the same answer. You don't need anything. You just keep it there.
I was there today, I looked, that's her. Right there.
Is there any landscaping around it?
Not in the driveway. It's in the driveway.
In the driveway.
In the driveway.
Which would put it in front of the house. It's in the front yard.
Yeah.
Where, where should I put it? I can move it anywhere, anywhere. It doesn't matter to me.
We'll discuss, we'll discuss that, thank you.
I can fence out my whole yard if it needs to be. Doesn't matter to me. I can fence the whole house and so nobody can see me or, or the dumpster. That's, it's not a big deal.
Thank you.
No.
Jed, do you have any questions or any comments?
No.
Paul? Tom? Jed? Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to ask any questions or make any comments?
Hi, my name is Elaine Zingarelli and I live at one-one-two Jamie Lane. And I have the pleasure of, when I look out my bedroom window, the dumpster is right outside. In the middle of his driveway now. It used to be to the edge of his driveway. He did move it. But it's in the middle of the driveway. The cover is always open, has been, I've been back and forth. This isn't my main residence. I live in central Massachusetts. But the dumpster lid is always open. Animals can get in, any birds fly in, whatever, which isn't. And you can get an aroma from the dumpster. I feel like I live next to a pizza shop, to tell you the truth. And that is a concern of mine.
Okay.
And, uh, right now, there are people, there have been people living there for the last two years, or for years. In the downstairs basement apartments. I don't really know how many people, or who. Once I stopped one of the gentlemen and I said, oh, are you the owner? Because it has changed hands. And he said, no. I said, oh, what's the owner's name? Just trying to be, find out. And he said, oh, I don't know. So they're not exactly open and giving of information, so. It makes it a little bit questionable to me, just when you don't know who owns the house you're living in. And I really don't know. I didn't, I don't think I've met the gentleman before. You don't live there, though?
Not unless you're at the podium, please, because this is televised and people at home just hear you. We want them to hear you, so, okay?
Do you live there or do you live at Plum Hollow?
After she's finished.
Yep.
Yes.
Because, oh, on the deed, it says Plum, Plum Hollow is his address. That's why I didn't know that he lived there. And, and I don't know who lives there. There are many people that, five cars are in the driveway and a motorcycle on the side now. In the yard. And I'm just, we did submit some information with our concerns to. Jed, last week when we thought we were.
Yep.
We have that.
Yeah, yeah. And they are, it just.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yep.
Uh, how many dumpsters are on properties in that neighborhood? How many houses actually have a dumpster?
None. It's a very residential neighborhood.
Because one of the things the tenants in the, in this bylaw is that they should comport to the neighborhood how the neighborhood appears. And it, this isn't a commercial site that would require dumpster that town supplies, recycling bins. People have to buy a trash can. Tenants are responsible for removing trash. Uh, so I don't think a dumpster fits in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I think we really need to start paying attention to landscaping on, on the plan.
Just for a second, this lady is at the podium, so do we have any other questions of her?
Well, well, I was talking about the landscaping, okay? I wasn't talking about her. I was talking specific to the site plan.
Okay.
I, I think we used to pay a lot more attention to site plans and landscaping and I think we need to work at it a little harder.
Well, from what we're seeing this evening, that's a great, great thought. But before she sits down, any other questions from, for her? Okay. And any other comments you'd like to make?
Well, I just think, I've lived there, owned property there since nineteen seventy-eight. And we've all, it's a neighborhood. And now it doesn't, now next door, and it's on my bedroom side. Uh, it doesn't look as much of a neighborhood with a many cars. And I don't know if it's gonna be affected. The work has already been done. See, I, I learned a little from listening to the Deepwood people before us. Because people have been living there, a variety of renters, I don't know, uh, for years now. Since he bought the property and before that even. But now that, I know the new law passed in February that the governor signed and all that. But I don't know how that's going to affect the number of bedrooms. Because I think currently, there's probably more people living there than, unless they're sleeping out, God knows where. It's a mystery to me. And I don't, I know there's a lot, there's kids and I, I like kids. I used to be a principal of a, and, before I retired. So I like kids, but there's lots of people. And I wonder who checks it after. Because it was, um, the deed, it said it was, uh, what is it? Bob, help me. It said, uh, it wasn't. From, wasn't, they didn't have an occupied.
An occupancy permit.
Permit, that's it, thank you. An occupancy permit. Currently even. It says open permit. And how long do you keep a permit opened? And would I have to have, because I wouldn't know that unless we looked at it and it said open permit? And did they check? Who checks in?
Going through this process, if we approve this, the gentleman will have to go to the building department, get a, get a building permit and there'll be inspections made.
Okay, so, and then, they, so they check back?
Yes.
We don't have to.
And if we approve this, we can make some conditions as far as the exterior of the building.
Okay.
Dumpster, et cetera.
No, we don't, we, we don't have to. Do we have to do anything?
The building commissioner takes care of the building. We take care of the surrounding property around the building.
Oh, that would be good.
That's what our purview is, the site.
That's what we like to hear from the neighbors when we have these hearings.
Yeah, okay, good.
The exterior of the building, not for that.
I appreciate it. I learned a little tonight because I didn't know.
Okay.
All the, but I do have, we do have concerns and other people and other neighbors have some concerns. I don't know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Just, anybody else? Yes, sir. And your name?
Bob Santa Carol at one-oh-six Jamie Lane. I wanna point out on the lower level, he's saying it'll only be two bedrooms, but I'm noticing, I could be wrong. Is there a closet in each of those bedrooms?
Hello, Jeff.
Yeah, that's, that comes under the building inspector.
Okay, usually considered a.
What they would make them do is you have to make, if it's currently a bedroom, they would have to widen the door opening. And make it so that the building commissioner deems that it's not a bedroom.
Okay, because usually if there's a closet in a room, it's a bedroom? And the only thing I'd like to see the board do is put a limit on the number of occupants, if that's possible.
And I don't know if we can do that.
I don't think that's in our purview.
No.
Okay. And I did go on Permanize and I did see an open permit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And the applicant, would you like to say some closing words, please?
So first I'll address the cars. My wife has a car. I have a work car. And there's another car. The motorcycle is mine. I'm young, I like to ride. The guy that lives downstairs, my cousin and my niece, they had two kids. I have two kids. Hence, how many people? That's about it. It's two, two downstairs, two upstairs and two kids upstairs and two kids downstairs. He's just had a kid. His kid's like seven months. So that's hence, so putting two bedroom downstairs and two bedroom upstairs. My kids, they don't leave, sleep with each other, so I have a bedroom just sitting there doing nothing.
Sure.
So all the cars, he has a car and he has a truck and all the other cars are mine.
Okay.
So that's, that's about it. They're all, and the dumpster, I did address with the town. I did address with the fire department. I did address with everybody.
We understand, but now you're asking for a new, a new permit here and we're gonna have.
Yeah, no, yeah. And I, another thing, I work from, I, I have a business out of my house. My cousin has a business out of downstairs. We both do appliance repair. So basically, why we got the dumpster, so we can throw all the parts and things away. So being, if the dumpster is the issue, I can.
Well, we're gonna discuss that. Not this evening, we're gonna discuss that.
So basically, just address how many peoples live there. It's eight total, that's about it.
And, and it's owner occupied?
Well, the thing, my brother bought it and I bought it off him. So now I'm the, he lives at one sixteen Jamie Lane. And, no, he lives at one-twenty-eight Plum Hollow, twenty-eight Plum Hollow. I live there. Yeah, his name is on the deed because I don't have credit to buy it. So he bought it and lets me pay, do the payments because I don't have the credit.
So he, he legally owns it, but you live there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay. Any other questions? Jim?
I just believe we heard testimony that there's two different businesses being run out of this. And you need a special permit from the ZBA to run even one business out of a house. So I think.
It's not like run out of the house. It's an appliance repair. We have a truck that sits there and we go to the truck and we go to the people's house.
I've heard testimony that we've heard two different?
Yeah, same, same business. Appliance repair. He does appliance repair and I do appliance repair. All we do at home is answer the phone at, once we get home at six o'clock. We don't bring any materials inside the house.
Right, thank you.
But there's a question about whether or not this is covered by home occupation, so I think that ought to be considered between meetings, right?
Yeah, I, if I may, I'll just follow up with you on the particulars and I can give you guidance about what that might look like.
All set?
And I've been trying to get my cousin to move so long, he has no place to go. I, I wanna do this with nobody living there because it's, it's not easy to construct something with somebody living there, but he has nowhere to go. So I'm, I'm in a tough spot. So either I legalize or I kick my niece and my nephew's out. That's, that's the two, I'm stuck between two hard places.
Could I just make a comment?
Sure.
I think the two instances that were in front of us tonight are just evidence of, of the desperate need for rental property. And I think we're gonna see more and more of this.
Well, we have a new ADU bylaw also. It's, it makes us a little, a little more liberal than we had before.
Yes, it does. And we'll learn to, to work with it.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to address one thing that the woman had mentioned when she came up, or, I'm sorry, the gentleman had asked about the closets in the bedrooms. Just on the, on the first floor again where it says den. On the right-hand side, you'll see there's a five-foot opening. It does a note that they're removing the closet.
Yeah, okay.
To make room for the rest of the.
Yeah, that was on the plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's it, we're done, we're going home. Oh, no, wait a minute.
So, is this another one that we're going to continue?
Yep.
So.
Motion?
I'll move to continue the, what is it, 116 Jamie Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Till the 24th.
Is there new, sorry, if I may, is there new information that you would like the applicant to provide?
Yeah, we're looking at the site plan, we'd like to see a better site plan.
Okay.
To show screening and the location of the dumpster.
Screening of the dumpster?
Yeah, yeah.
And location?
Yeah, location.
I have a question, are we ready to just start accepting residential dumpsters every time we put an accessory apartment unit in?
No, we're not.
Well, it just, it sounds like.
Is that a motion?
I was asking you a question, you're in charge.
Can I respond to that?
I mean, this is internal, this is our board.
The dumpster is this, what might be happened, even if I don't have an ADU, I wish to have a dumpster.
We're going to discuss, you're going to chance the next time you come in front of
My understanding, if, when it's a single-family home, you don't have to do a site plan review. But as soon as you make it into an accessory apartment, you come here and you do a site plan review, and that's when we get to say whether you have a dumpster or not, so that's my understanding of what we're talking about.
If I could pass around, if I could just.
This is our conversation.
Okay, so it sounds like you're interested in potentially doing another sort of individual site visit situation to get a sense for the property.
Yeah.
Continue the applicant to the 24th of June?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
At which time, would you be okay if we drafted a draft decision for you in the event that you're prepared to make a decision at that evening?
And we could amend that if we needed to?
If you wanted, and if you're not ready, you just simply won't use it.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
I want to see some landscaping and some buffering.
He said he was willing to fence it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I like to see.
Right.
Well, that's some of the.
Right, but he's trying to say we're going to approve it that night.
Make it comfortable.
I'm just telling you what I like to see, that's all.
For sure.
Trying to answer your question.
Well, and it's not just fencing, it's moving it, get it toward the back of the property and fence it.
So.
That's a form of motion?
No.
Just to continue.
No, just to continue, and at that date, we will then discuss what we want to see amended to any motion that might be drafted, okay?
Okay, I've got it, so you continue to the 24th of June?
Mm-hmm.
Very, very good, thank you.
See you on the 24th. And the neighbors also, if you want to come back and join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have a hearing for the applicant, Amir.
Smikevich.
Smikevich? Thank you.
Special permit application to modify the October 5th, 2011 special permit and the December 14th, 2016 special permit modification to allow the construction of a second 5,400 square foot, one-story storage building with adjacent roofed, open storage area for landscaping and non-agriculture uses to be built on 961 Sandwich Road, and to allow the redivision of 955 and 961 Sandwich Road into Lot 2C, which would be 7.35 acres, and Lot 2D, which would be 1.36 acres, with a portion of Lot 2D having width of 40 feet. And for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Drewley, I represent the applicant, I'm Bob Amen, I'm a Thalmann attorney. Before I begin, I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman, on your appointment.
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to go to Tom first, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was published in The Enterprise on May 23rd, 2025, and also on May 30th, 2025. Sixteen of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, I was congratulating you on your appointment, but I really want to use just a moment as if it were public comment to thank Charlotte Harris for her work as chairman, because I don't think that's been done tonight, and I think you all agree, she's been a fine chairman, I don't know whether it's for two years or four years or longer, but, thank you.
You're correct, and I was remiss, I should have done that right up front.
Well, hopefully you're ready for a little less drama. With me tonight are the owners of the properties that we'll discuss, Amir Smikevich and his wife Julie, and they leased the property to a business, Greener Image Landscaping, which Amir is the principal, the president of, but I suspect he doesn't do much without consulting with Julie. The land is in the agricultural district on Sandwich Road, and I'm going to describe the neighborhood a little bit first and describe what's there. And our zoning bylaw has for many years now allowed in an agricultural district, commercial nursery option, operations if they have existed on that site, then the owner can be allowed by special permit of the planning board to devote all or a portion of the lot or lots for storage of equipment and supplies for fabrication of sub-assemblies and parking of wheeled equipment, subject to a number of conditions, and I won't go through all those conditions, but we meet them all as was determined when the property was first by special permit devoted to the landscaper's yard for greener image landscaping in 2011. So I handled that permitting before the planning board, and then in 2016, we came back to the planning board and received approval to build a storage building of 5,400 square feet, 90 by 60, on the site. And the application today is for a second building of the same size. So, this is an application for a modification of the special permit that already exists for the uses that are already going on, on the property. The second part of the application is to adjust the lot lines. Now, earlier tonight, you voted approval not required for the plan that we need approved for this, and we need that approved because of the proposed location of the second storage building, so we want to move a lot line, and I'll go through that in some detail. It don't, usually A and R plans don't also require a special permit. This one requires a special permit because the, in 2016, we divided the property more than about eight and a half acres into two lots, specifically because there were two structures, both residential in nature, and we wanted one residence to be on each of the lots for compliance with zoning purposes. And the only way to effectively divide the land with the storage building that was built was if a portion of the smaller lot was only 40 feet wide at one strip, which is allowed by the bylaw, you can reduce a lot, which can't be less than 50 feet wide, by up to 20 percent, and so the planning board in 2016 approved the creation of a lot that had a portion 40 feet wide. We're adjusting that lot line now, but not affecting the portion of the property that is only 40 feet wide, and both lots are in common ownership. So we think you'd make the same finding you did back in 2016, but just adjusting a lot line. Now, the plan I have, not a plan really, it's an aerial photograph, this particular plan was, this particular aerial photo was taken in 2021, and I've chosen this one to show you first, because what it tells us about the property, and it tells us when this photo was taken, and it was taken, no doubt, on a weekend, or early in the morning, very early, or late in the day, because all of these landscaping, greener image landscaping trucks are on the property, and other equipment, as you can see, and in these parking areas where I'm pointing, there are no employee cars parked. So we know that this particular photo in 2021 was taken at that time, and the significance of that, so it's helpful, is to show how the property is used, the storage of vehicles that during the day, and I'll show you one that's the opposite, that has all of the parking filled with cars, but you'll see all the trucks are gone, because they're out doing landscaping. This building, right here, is the residence that exists on the site, and this is a second residence, these are the two residences which were the reason why we divided the property, and here, I'm tracing the existing lot line, a bit over an acre for 955 Sandwich Road. This big lot, over seven acres, is 961 Sandwich Road, and it has, as I said, that residential structure in the front. This is the 5,400 square foot storage building that was constructed in 2017 after a special permit was granted. This is a quonset hut type of temporary structure that's on the site. Julian Amir purchased 981 Sandwich Road some years ago, before the special permit was granted for the storage building, and this former house is now their offices for the business, and also some storage on the lower level. And you can see all sorts of storage bins for different grades of gravel and other materials that they use in their business. You can also see, I'm not sure if I can blow this up, but I'll just explain to you, that there's a lot of equipment, different types of, there are plows and spreaders, attachments for tractors and the like, that's on the property. And the purpose of needing another storage shed is to be able to get equipment and materials, materials such as bags of peat moss and cement and soils and so on, out of the weather, where they are subject to damage and deterioration, equipment gets rusty, and so the purpose of the storage building is that, to store materials that are already on the site and to be able to maintain them. It is, there's no anticipation of expanding the business because of this storage facility, it's to solve an existing problem and be able to take better care of materials and equipment. When we look in a moment at the site plan for the proposed building, you'll see that it's located right in this area. And I just wanted to show you also that it's only the front, approximately third of the property that is used in the business. All this land going back here is in unnatural condition. Of course, there's 100-foot buffer area from this pond of Conservation Commission jurisdiction, and also much of this area back here, though none of the area where the proposed building will be is in the NHESP, the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program mapping. So, that issue is relevant, and I'll talk to you a bit about the wildlife corridor that's required. What I do want to note about this plan is that since 2001, when this photo was taken, a considerably larger, 7,450 square foot storage building and contractor's yard building was constructed right in this area on adjacent property, and a large area was, is cleared for parking and storage. So I just want to point out that this plan doesn't represent that development. So that's, I wanted to show you that, and I'm just going to show you a picture of what the place looks like during the workday.
Can we turn off that light?
Turn off, turn it off.
I'm sorry, that's your job, you sit over there.
But I don't know which.
Oh, no, try this day, I'm kidding.
Top left.
Oh.
Top left, yes. And the bottom one, the.
He's an expert.
Third one over. There you go.
So I sat here, I didn't know what your problem was.
Thank you, that is much better.
This is a Google Maps aerial that is on the town's GIS system, and it shows what you've already seen, but I noticed that there's only one vehicle or trailer in this parking area, it's pretty much cleared of the trucks, because the owners of these cars, here and there, are out working. So I'm going to talk about parking a little bit, and the suitability and the sufficiency of parking, and the fact that by moving the storage of materials and equipment into the new building, there will be more spaces freed up for parking, but that is not to say that there isn't enough parking already. There is no parking problem with the business as is, and the intention is not to expand the building as a result of building, of building it, the business, that is. And this plan also, you can see, shows the construction, this is, I think, probably a 2004 photo, this shows the development next door and the construction of that larger storage building. Okay.
Mr. Amen, the one with the black roof, is that part of Greener Image?
No, no. It's owned by, I think it's Sandwich Road Development LLC, which is, which is actually Mark Bogosian.
Bogosian, that's what I thought.
Bogosian Development, so no, it is completely separate, just an example of what's, and that also, of course, was allowed, not as a former agricultural site with the allowed use as a landscaping yard, this was allowed as a contractor's yard under a different section of the zoning bylaw, but I think that was also a planning board special permit, not ZBA, and that was in 2022. And that was in 2022. So let's look at the plans. So this is the plan, and it shows the proposed building, 90 by 60, same size as this one. And as you'll see with the architectural elevations we'll show you, there is attached to it a standalone, it's not attached, but it's right next to it, a standalone open canopy that is to provide some additional, more out-of-the-weather storage space for equipment. Here's the new lot. And we've, the old lot is this line, which it says former lot line right there, and it came to this point, and then down here and back to the street. The proposed lot has its required, seven, sorry, it's 150-foot diameter circle for minimum width requirement. Instead of being in this area, it's now shown over here. This is the area of the lot, existing and proposed, that is only 40 feet wide, and the reason why we needed a special permit, which was granted. It isn't changing at all. Once we get past this corner of the adjacent property owned by Shirley Young, whose family is here, then the, this becomes 50 feet wide, more than is required, but actually, I mean, that is the requirement, so we meet that instead of needing any relief. And it's 55 feet across here. So although this is a somewhat serpentine lot, it meets all of the requirements and is, if one really wanted to build back here, you easily could get there without sharing a driveway. So this is a lot as entitled to A and R approval, as you voted earlier tonight. But it does, by adjusting the lot line, meaning we can put the building where we would like to do it. The building is located a little bit more than 30 feet from the lot line of the adjusted smaller lot that is in common ownership, also owned by Julian Emir. And so if you add that 50 feet plus a little over, more than 30 feet, this building is at about 80 feet from the closest property line owned by anybody else. The zoning bylaw for this use says that the setback should be 50 feet unless the planning board determines that a lesser setback is sufficient. The planning board made that finding in 2016 for the existing storage building. You'll see that the distance to the lot line existing and proposed, not changing at all for that, is 20.2 feet. So the planning board made a finding that that was okay. So we ask that the planning board make a similar finding with regard to this 30.9 inches dimension, keeping in mind, as the decision from 2016 says, that joining property is in common ownership, and there's no detriment to allowing the 31-foot setback instead of 50, where we have an additional 50 feet in common ownership. And as the planning board's decision says from 2017, any purchaser of this lot who are to be sold separately would be aware of this condition if the building was constructed. So that's a bit of information about the location, the way we laid out the lot in order to accommodate it. There is some additional paving proposed between the two buildings and in front of and to the side. It's not a lot, it's an additional 3,000 or so square feet. The issue of drainage was raised, how is stormwater going to be handled? These are very sandy soils, closest to the wetlands of this new building is over 240 But we have submitted drainage calculations as requested by the town planner. We didn't get those in because it was requested after our filing was made. I don't know if the calculations have been reviewed by the town engineer, but they've been prepared by a professional engineer and have proposed, did in the original submission, two catch basins to handle the roof runoff, one here and one here. And what's been added to the plan, and these plans were submitted to the town planner today, in fact, they were submitted by Permedize and Han email, but I have the full size plans to give you. And the only change to the plans is that we added a catch basin for the surface runoff other than the roof in this location. And there's a note down here about how those basins should be installed. So also, the topography is going away from the budding properties, both from the Young property and from the properties that are to west, which is over here. Now, I'd point out that the, after the Young property, the butter along here is Julian Emir, their residence is there on this adjacent property. And you can see the topography along here, the topography is steep right here, and that's falling down into the lot. So on both sides of the building, the topography is such that there should be no runoff to, there can't be any runoff to adjacent properties, but we also are providing for the three catch basins. So there's that. There are no bedrooms being proposed, there's no bathroom being proposed in this storage building. The only present need for water will be to be able to continuously flush out a floor drain, which is required to be in the building because there will be equipment that has petroleum products in it. So the water department has said that there needs to be a separate service to the building just for that. The building is not of a size that requires a fire suppression system, this is a metal building in any case. I've talked to Matt Lannan, the superintendent of the water department, he's explained why we need a separate service, and Emir has agreed that we'll do whatever is required by the water department. So I don't think that needs to be a concern to the planning board. If we need to put in a separate service from the street, as it looks like we will, then Emir will do that. So as I said, no bedrooms, no bathrooms, storage of existing materials and equipment, no change of use. There will be no impact on the coastal pond overly district by the construction of this building on a portion of the lot, which is already significantly developed. So no increase in the relevant nutrient that eventually reaches coastal pond. Let me talk a little bit about that parking issue. Well, first, let's look at those building plans, just so you can see what it is, and then if you have any questions about the site, of course, we can come back to it. The site does show where there's parking. It's gravel parking. There are 10 spaces along here, as the aerial photo showed. It's very finely graded gravel, and I love the way that Emir has designated and separated all the parking spaces. And you've probably all seen it at different places, it's, it looks like a rope. I'm not sure what the material is, but it's embedded in the gravel and then runs the 20-foot length of the parking space. And so even though it's gravel, it's as if it's lined. And these spaces are all oversized. Those, are they fair to call them ropes?
What? It's also nylon rope, yeah.
Nylon cord.
That we stake into the ground, so.
They are 10 feet apart, and the spaces are 20 feet long. As you know, the required spaces are nine by 18, these are 10 by 20. And that's because a lot of the people who work in the landscaping business have their own trucks, they're larger than typical cars, and the larger spaces are good. But that's relevant to the issue of adequate parking. 10 of those spaces are here, six spaces are here, and you can see that on this plan, the start of an area that's right in front of that office building, and there are four spaces there. They're all designated with a very neat sign and all given a number. The aerial photographs show parking in this area, and it's, what they're showing are parking of business vehicles and equipment. Those spaces will all be made available as needed, and as I said, there hasn't been a need. So 10 spaces here, six here, four here, five or six here, we're at 25 or 26 designated spaces, and this is really a very broad area, easily, easy to have additional parking. And I'll go back to, I suppose that Google plan was a good one, and just show you where there's other parking. So there are two entrances to the site, actually three, because there is a curb cut at 955, and a wide driveway area that could accommodate, in addition to being a driveway, could accommodate six or seven cars. It isn't needed, it isn't used for parking except for the employee, one of the sons of Julie and Emir, who's here tonight, who lives there, I gather. And there's a curb cut, a second curb cut here. And then there's an entrance to 981 Sandwich Road over here, and it leads to an expansive area of pavement that has three spaces in front of the building that are designated for visitor parking. And there's room for easily another five, six, or seven cars, both in front of the building along here and on the sides, because again, it's such a wide area of parking. The, and this is an area where you can see that there's parking even during the day. I'm not sure if these are employee cars or business trucks, but that will be available. There are 25 to 30 employees at the peak of the year. Those employees include Emir and Julie and their sons. And as I said, Julian and Emir live in this house, and one son lives at 955. There simply is plenty of parking, but if we needed more, with the removal of material which is presently stored along the backside, I'd call it, but it's really the front facing the street of this 90-foot-long building, you could put 10 cars along there. And you could find other places to put cars on all this site. I mentioned the potential for more parking along here, but again, it isn't needed. If you have questions about parking, happy to try to answer, but we don't think.
I have a question for you, sir.
Go ahead, please.
On this beautiful plan we have here, it doesn't show any parking at all.
Well, I'm not sure that's true, it actually says 26 spaces.
It doesn't show where the parking goes, it just says it. So maybe at some point, because you spent a lot of time talking about all the parking, if it can be delineated on the plan, it might be really helpful to us.
Do you want us to show those lines of cables or just say 10 spaces?
I did a site visit today, but.
I'm sorry?
I did a site visit today, I looked at it, there's a lot of parking there, but.
Right.
We're discussing parking, we should maybe show it on the plan at some point. Just, it's only my, only my thought.
Okay.
Not.
That's fine.
Not something we're requesting at this point, but.
We can do that, of course.
Thank you.
And keep in mind that this is not a new special permit we're asking for, it's a modification of a special permit. What we're proposing will not increase the parking needs, and I think that's important to point out. It also relates to other issues, like the impact on the coastal pond overly district and so on.
Okay.
It also relates to the wildlife corridor issue. Now, our zoning bylaw includes a section that says for any special permit use, you're supposed to provide wildlife corridors. I can assure you that that is not typically, becomes an issue and is even required. Every time you'd have a special permit, well, for something related to a single-family residence, we don't think about wildlife corridors. And the wildlife corridor issue was not mentioned or discussed or in either the 2011 or the 2016 special permit. It also did not come up with regard to the building on that adjacent site, that much bigger storage building. But I want to show you a plan that shows the NHESP natural heritage area and the, also Conservation Commission jurisdiction area. So right here is where the new building is going to be, and actually, this old lot line pretty much matches up with the side of the building that'll be closest to this protected area. So everything that you see in yellow here is NHESP designated property, and the blue shows the limits of the Conservation Commission jurisdiction, half of which is all around it, is within the buffer zone A, where you can't do anything, no construction would be permitted. And what the wildlife corridor bylaw says is that wildlife corridors should be provided, and the applicant has an option to either determine the corridors that wildlife use and have an adequate corridor for the migration. This isn't a foraging area, it's a migration area that animals, particularly whitetail deer, pass through. Or designating areas that are found to be a home of rare and endangered species. In other other words, NHESP property. So, the applicant has that, that choice if, if, if it were required. In no case can the corridor be more than, be required to be more than three hundred feet wide. So what I've done on this plan is just shown, this is a distance, when I used the tool to draw it, it came out to three hundred and two feet. But that's, that, this shows two hundred and ninety-nine feet, doesn't, gets to around the edge of the pond. This lot right here, in the back of the adjoining Bogosian property, was laid out when his building was built as a, as a buffer area, and it's an unbuildable lot. There is running along this line and then turning and running through this property, a one-hundred-foot-wide commelectric easement. So, of course, that is a perfect deer corridor that already exists. And what's really significant is that this whole piece, and I have a plan that shows you more of it, is seventy acres of conservation property owned by the town. Amir says his observation is that the, that deer, although, of course, they're seen from time to time in the yard, he's seen them jump fences in his yard, but that, the path is, is in this area on the, what's the west, east side of the pond. And what I would suggest is that your decision, if you need to address, even in this modification where the use has already been permitted, the building is nowhere near the areas that would be protected. We have no problem with a requirement that the special permit doesn't allow any activity that would interfere with the passage of wildlife within, you know, three hundred feet of this, this, this corner. Like I said, this issue has not come up before, but it is mentioned in the town planner's staff report, and that's why I've addressed it. I only want to submit to you a letter from another butter, from an abutter. This is from Adam McDonald, who is here tonight. It says, "We, Adam and Caitlin McDonald, neighbors of Amir and Julie Smikovich of nine thirty-eight Sandwich Road, are in full support of Amir and Julie's new building for their business. They maintain that business in a clean and professional manner. We have no objection to the new structure on the landscaping property. Amir has reviewed his plans with us as well as his business, and has never been a problem to us." And they both signed it, so.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Charlotte, any questions?
Yes, I have two questions. One is something I don't understand. Why, in, in the description that you submitted that we all are going by, does it make a point of saying non-agricultural uses?
Oh, because.
Why would you say that?
I'll read you again.
Agriculture's all in.
Yes, but it, it makes a point of saying non-agricultural uses. I just wonder, in the, here, it's part of their application, storage area for landscaping and non-agricultural uses.
Well, what the zoning bylaw says is that, and remember, now we're going back to 2011, says that any property currently in agricultural use for commercial nursery operations, which this property was determined to have been, may be allowed to devote all or a portion of the lots for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of subs, assemblies, and parking of wheeled equipment, subject to the following findings. There's not, and the requirements are whatever the planning board puts in. Now, Amir's business is a landscaping business. One of the requirements is that the number of vehicles, the type of equipment, the volumes and so on, also be included, and in 2011 and in 2016, and again, this year. We've submitted a current inventory, it's several pages long, of the vehicles and the equipment, and some estimate of the volume of all sorts of materials.
That's, that's actually why I asked.
All of which is, I wouldn't call agricultural.
I don't understand what most of that is on the inventory, so that's why I ask. Is this to be general storage for something other than their own business?
No. No.
It's all, all the equipment on the inventory is part of their business?
Yes, one hundred percent.
So that answers my first question. And my second question is, we have a letter that you've probably seen also, signed by Shirley Young.
Yeah.
And her issue is about the sighting of the second building spoiling her view. And I'm sure you've seen that and thought about it, and I wonder what your response is to that.
Well, I think the right thing to do is to let the Young family respond to your question.
So, my name's Michelle Lino. I'm talking for my mother, Shirley Young. So, Amir and I did a walkthrough earlier today, because when we looked at the plan, it looked like it was going to be right in her backyard. And it's kind of, she will definitely see it, but she'll just see a corner of it.
Yeah, it seems to be off to the side a bit.
Yeah, there's some maple trees right now that's blocking it. The only thing that we may request is, come wintertime, if she can still see it or see a part of it, is put some, like, evergreens or something up there, and Amir and I talked about that, and that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that was my question, too. I wanted to hear from that about it.
I actually remember this from all the time. We had a big inventory of all the trucks. They had to identify all the vehicles and list them out by size, but we've never heard anything since. But that, that, you just mentioned it briefly, but I can't remember that first hearing.
Well, there isn't a requirement in the bylaw to update that annually, and of course.
That's what I thought.
Of course, the volumes change, the exact equipment changes, we, trucks get sold and purchased and so on. But we've complied with the bylaw every time we've come before the board to have an updated inventory.
I don't care. I just remembered it. I just thought it was a strange thing, and I, a memory that came back.
And I really appreciate the fact that Amir and the Youngs have, have talked and, I think, addressed their concerns. The new building is actually located more than two hundred and twenty feet away from the house at, the Young house. And the, the aerial photographs I showed, show substantial vegetation, trees along the property line, and I, I know Amir will do everything he can to, to satisfy their concerns. The new building is a good bit farther away from the house than the building that was approved in 2016, though I'm not sure how the line of sight or the angle works for that.
What, what color is the building going to be? What color is the building going to be?
It's a light beige.
Light beige, okay.
Yeah. Very, like, almost like the color of this wall.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone for him, please, or the applicant? Yes. Thank you. And your name, please?
Hi, my name's Amir Smikovich, owner of Greener Image Landscaping, and this property that we're in discussion about. The color of the building is very similar to this. It's like a taupe brown, like a gray brown.
Yeah.
It's going to be the same exact color. If anybody did, you guys saw the site, went by, it's the same color as the existing building.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
I, which reminds me that I actually didn't show you the building elevations. I'm happy to show those to you.
We have, we have.
You don't? Yeah.
You need to see them? Sorry? You need to see the building elevation, so we, yeah, I'm here.
I'm happy to pull them up.
I'll come up so people can see them.
You have people at home.
No, that's the purpose.
More from the way down here.
The building's only twenty-four feet high. And again, it's, although the doors may be placed differently than the existing building, it's the same, except there is this storage shed out the other side. Now, this looks like it's an awfully low storage area, but because of the way the topography goes, it'll actually drop down, and this height is around ten feet, so there will be a lot of storage available underneath, underneath there. And in order to make that work, there'll be a retaining wall along part of the back, because this, it comes around the slope, but this is degraded all across there, inside that retaining wall. If you followed that, I'm impressed.
Thank you. Pat, any questions?
I do. You have this shed, the new storage shed that you're referring to, but you also have a canopy attached to it, and I'm assuming that a canopy means it's just supported by posts. It'll be open air. What kinds of things will be stored in each one of those?
Well, Aaron can, Aaron, Amir can do better than I can, no doubt.
Sure, yeah.
He mentioned specifically in, outside that area, plows that'd be attached to trucks during the winter, that type of thing.
Yeah, that's, snowplows.
Anything?
Seasonal stuff that you don't want to leave outdoors at rusts and, you know, shouldn't be in the weather, but, snowplows that sit in the parking lot now that are just an eyesore.
Will that be under the canopy or in the bill?
Yes. No, under the canopy, yeah. Because they're hard to move around, so like, if we were in the building and we had to, like, get to something, you would have to take and hook up to the truck to move it, or you'd have to have a machine move it around. So, they're kind of cumbersome, and we only use them, well, if it snows on Cape Cod, but three or four times, a dozen times a year, so, but we have to have them, unfortunately. Wish, wish it didn't snow, but. So those type of items would go under there. Some bag product that you wouldn't want out in the weather getting, what happens is the sun deteriorates the bags, and then the guys go to pick up the bags, and they just fall apart. So, things like that, just out of the weather and.
Will there be any vehicles in the storage shed?
In the building?
Yeah, in the building.
If so, it'd be like, like, if we have a snowstorm coming, we'll put the snow trucks in there so that they're not, you know, they're ready to go in the morning.
Okay.
But the main purpose is, there'll be pallet racks in there with, you know, different materials. I mean, we do, we build fire pits, so we need to have places to store, like, all the parts for things that we build, masonry products to keep dry. Those can't go under the shed, because they, you know, they'll actually absorb the moisture.
Sure.
But mainly equipment. We have bobcats that just sit out in the parking lot and rust. We have mini excavators that sit and rust. And I have an old loader that I just had it all repainted and reconditioned, because the new one's $250,000. And the only reason it needed to be reconditioned is because it just sits there and rusts. So, things that we can put indoors, and it'll, it's also cleaner, neater. I, you know, I'm a landscaper. I like things looking nice and neat and orderly, and if I can put it all inside and it's nice and neat and orderly, then that's how I like it. I live there, you know? It's my house, and it's my residence, and it's my son's residence, and my other son, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Paul?
Yeah. Aside from the parking, what is the access from Sandwich Road to this building? Because it seems to me, and you through some paved areas and other areas, and it's not.
Well, there actually are four different ways to get there. A couple of them aren't.
You got to meander through the buildings to get there?
Say again?
You said there's four different ways. You have to meander between the buildings to get there?
Well, why don't I show you on a plan? On the, on the.
It's a busy site plan. It's really busy. It's busy.
So this is the site plan, but it might also be useful to show an aerial photograph. This shows the large lot, which is two sixty-one, Sandwich, and, I'm sorry, nine sixty-one, Sandwich, and this is nine fifty-five, Sandwich. So, as I meant, there is a driveway from Sandwich Road here. There's a broader driveway that goes into the site, accesses the parking. One can drive this way and around. You'll be able to go around it, or come here and get to the building. But this is mainly also that the people who work there are getting supplies to take out to their jobs, can access the equipment or materials that they need from either of these buildings, because what they have now is not sufficient. In addition, again, I'm going to go to the aerial photograph to show you, just because you asked about it. This is another driveway, but it leads to Amir and Julie's house. They're, they have a driveway. They can go right to the business site from here. There is also a driveway around this side of the building. There's quite a falloff down to the storage area, but they can drive from here into the site that way. So, there actually, there are four different lots here, nine eighty-one, nine sixty-one, nine fifty-five, and the residential lot at nine forty-three, and there are four separate curb cuts. Can I answer your question, Mr. Dryer?
It's not clear on this drawing.
It'd either be here or it'd be up here, Paul.
Yeah, but once you get there, you've got buildings here, and you got to go around the buildings.
Yeah.
Then you got to come around again. There's all kinds of equipment and things there.
These are substantial.
It'd be an easy access to that building.
These are pretty substantial distances between the buildings. They're more than forty. At the closest point, the new building is at least forty feet from the, either other structure.
And it's purposeful, too, because you move an equipment around, you need the space to maneuver. And, I don't know, you can't really just have signage directing you one way or the other. You have to access these buildings from different angles, different perspectives.
It'll be easy access, very soon.
Just to, again, just the, the corner, this is forty-two point four feet between the corner of these buildings. This is fifty-five point six feet between this greenhouse, I called it a Quonset hut type building, and the proposed building. These are plenty of room for maneuvering.
Thank you. Paul, any other questions? Or comments?
Yeah, I think it's a very unusual way of directing traffic to that area. It's, I've been out there. It's a clean site. It's a good site, and there's a lot of open area, but some paved and some aren't. But the other meander through all the buildings to be able to get there, and it seems to be an unusual way of doing it. Thank you.
Paul? Any questions or comments?
What time does the business open in the morning? The truck starts, is starting.
Seven.
To the podium, please.
But the, I believe, and I. I'm pretty sure that the permit allows operations to begin earlier at six. Might as well be sure. One of the nice things about being on a property where you've got expansive area.
Right.
You've got nine fifty-five protecting you from nine sixty-one and so on. You've got the neighbors who've indicated they haven't had a problem with the operations. And actually, this new building is going to screen some operations and make them less noisy, if they were noisy. I do want to make sure that that information is, is correct, that I told you.
Well, we'll, you'll look that up in a second. So, looking on the list, there's twenty-one trucks on your inventory list, and, but the new structure being built, do you anticipate expanding your truck fleet? No?
No, one or two maybe up or down, and, you know, we're not in front of group.
Yeah.
The non-emergency hours in the 2011 bylaw, which were repeated, are six AM to seven thirty, Monday through Saturday.
It seems like, you know, we always want to be good neighbors, right? It seems like that's, that's one of your goals.
Yeah, we're not looking to, like, we're, we're happy the size we are. We're comfortable. It's a family business and, you know.
Yep, right at the mic.
So I'm Adam McDonald. I'm Amir's neighbor. Been a family resident for 15 years. I've been next to him for about eight years, and I have a seven-year-old and I live there with my wife. And I've never, never had a problem with noise or even the way his property looks. I mean, everything's nice and clean, neat. It's very professional. His, I, again, I've never had any problem with noise or anything like that, so I could tell you that right off the bat. And even if, even if he, he's always advised, my wife and I, of work crews coming in the area, if they're near our house, he's been very professional about it. Even if we did have a problem, we could always, we feel comfortable enough to go into him, and he would professionally handle that problem. And as, you know, when it comes to Shirley and everything, you know, putting up that buffer, like those blockages for viewing the building, things like that, it's, you know, he's willing to work with us, his surrounding neighbors. So like I said, there's no issue with noise or the way his property looks or anything like that. Could definitely, just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you very much. I have one more question. Are you putting any lighting up?
No, just on the building, just motion lights.
I just want to make a point, so we've been talking about lately about dark sky lighting.
Yeah, so.
It goes in so many different directions.
Right, so.
Something to consider.
Yeah.
I know you're far enough away.
Yes.
Mr. Dryer talked about the distance and the tree line.
It's, it's kind of a bonus attention for me because that, that new building that went up that I don't own further down, I can see the glow at night from my deck. And that's not what I want. So we do have some motion lights for security. They're, they're aimed down low. It's just so that it's safe when you walk. But I have landscape lighting up, so you can pretty much see at night. Like, I walk a lot over to my son's house. I mean, we have a pool over at the, at our, at our office that we'll go and use. It's a display, was there when we bought it, so we kind of fixed it up. But, you know, we're always walking around the property in the evening, and we have landscape lighting, and I don't want it to look like a parking lot. That's, you know, if you, if you've been there, you'll see it. It's, you know, and we're still, getting this building is going to allow us to even landscape further because areas that, you know, I feel are messy, it's because equipment's parked there. You know, and nobody's complaining, it's me. It's, you know, I like things neat and orderly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set, Tom?
I just wanted to comment, just because of things I do in town, I'm going up and down that road three, four times a week. And I've really kept an eye on it because it came before us. And before that, Mr. Pogosian came here in order to put up his building and took down a lot of trees, so I've just been watching it. And it's always tidy, and I really appreciate that. That's nice. Thank you.
So I think I've heard enough, and I think we could suggest that we have a positive motion drafted for the next meeting, if that's possible.
Just keep in mind, it's a special permit, so your hearing is still open. You have to close the hearing first.
Yeah.
Provided that you are comfortable, but I would suggest that you leave the hearing open.
Leave the hearing open.
There's a revised plan, there's still drainage calculations that need to be considered by engineering, so I think continuing to another date certain is.
So we don't want to have one drafted and to be amended then?
Right.
Okay.
Because I would suggest you keep the hearing open if there's anyone who wants to comment on the revised plans.
Okay.
It's unlikely, but just in case.
Okay.
Should we just add that, at least I agree with Mr. Ament, that there's no need for a wildlife card or concern?
I would suggest that the applicant is consult with the Marine Environmental Services. It's likely that, well, I won't speak for them, but it's possible that they may agree that, you know, no mitigation needs to be, no mitigation needs to happen, but at least consult with them and have that conversation because it is a requirement. Why it didn't come up before, I don't know. Can't speak to that.
Yes, Mr. Ament?
First of all, we don't have any objection to having the hearing remain open because I think there are some outstanding issues, as the town planner said. I would like to ask if the board is willing to ask the town planner to draft a proposed decision and to share it with, with me so that we can go over if there are any issues about it.
I think you already did.
I think we just had a discussion, so you want to leave it open or can we do it?
I would suggest you leave the hearing open.
You'll hear, okay.
Without drafting a, without the preliminary decision.
I mean, we're already working on the decision. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. So what would be a date that we could?
It would likely be okay, as long as it's okay with the applicant, for the 24th of June. That would give engineering plenty of time. And I would imagine time to consult with Marine Environmental Services. That should go relatively quickly.
Yeah, we're, that's, that date is fine, and I'm happy to consult with Environmental Services. I know that they received a referral. I think it's their obligation to make a referral response, but it's also perfectly good, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to them and see if there's, are any issues, so I'll try to do that.
Thank you.
So then we'll see you on the 24th.
Thank you. Glad your business is prospering.
Thank you.
Good to see you worked it out with your next-door neighbor.
Yeah.
The next thing on our agenda is planning board discussion, November 2024, meeting zoning amendments, attorney general approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in everyone's packet is the combined approval, and I say combined because the attorney general initially approved Articles 15, 34, and 35, which were the Mr. Cod overlay and the amendments that you made to home occupation. They approved those back in February. And they asked for an extension at that time to consider the amendments that you proposed to the ADU bylaw, the ADU use tables, as well as, or I should say, the use tables that included the ADU use and Article 36, which was your non-conforming structures, uses, and lots. So included in your packet is a lot of information from the Attorney General's office. I know it's late this evening, so I'm going to go over the high points. The good news is, as you know, Mr. Cod was approved, as you suggested to town meeting, as was the home-based business. There were no changes presented by the Attorney General's office on the non-conforming section. So all of that was good news. They did make some suggestions, and they also required some deletions on the ADU bylaw amendments. So I'm going to just zip through that pretty quickly. So right off the bat, they tried to make it very clear that the ADUs are not tied to single-family homes. So any reference to single-family within the proposed ADU amendments, they required deletion of, and those included in three sections, 9.1A, 9.1B, and 9.1D, A and B. So 9.1A was the purpose statement. The 9.1B was the definition of accessory dwelling unit. And 9.1D was the section related to how it looks, the ADU, in relation to its single-family residence. So they, they made it clear that it's not about single-family and being compliant with that. Then they removed or required the deletion of the minimum lot size. So before, you had a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, even smaller, 7,000 square feet if you're on the sewer system. They said absolutely not, you can't have minimum lot size requirements. Then they eliminated, and we talked about it at the decision component of the, of the agenda, they removed the limitation on the rental periods for ADUs. So, you know, we talked about with 80 Southview Way, they allowed us to keep weekly or monthly rentals are okay, but we couldn't require a, a minimum period of rental, meaning that six-month clause that you had in there, they said you need to delete that. So again, you can, and we will discuss this a little bit in the future, you can refer to the ADU cannot be used as a short-term rental. The issue that we have right now is that we don't really define a short-term rental in the zoning bylaw, so that's something that we need to do in order to refer to it or perhaps make reference to a state law which defines a short-term rental. So that's sort of in the future. We'll be looking to make an amendment to specify that. And then the last item is the bedroom limitation. So before you had, if a, if an ADU is located in a coastal pond overlay or the water resource district, you were restricted to one, or an applicant was restricted to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet. They said you need to delete all of that, and you can't have a restriction on the number of bedrooms in the ADU. So there was a clause within the size of the ADU, a lawful size, that we said you, it can be a maximum of two bedrooms. They said you have to eliminate that as well.
So you could have a three-bedroom?
You could, yeah.
If the septic system, if it beats Port of Health?
Right, so there's no bedroom limitation. You cannot have that in there.
I have another question. You've mentioned the minimum lot size. When did that become effective?
So that became effective, it's retroactive to the, to when we first publicized the hearing.
When did the attorney general pass it? I was just sat to a zoning board meeting where all they talked about was the house, the lot was too small.
Again, this is only for the ADU.
Okay.
It's only for an ADU. That it does not have a minimum lot size requirement for an ADU.
All right.
Which would not be before, before the zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, that's what, I'm fine. My mistake.
What happened about owner-occupied?
Again, that was taken out before.
That's gone.
Yes. Owner-occupancy requirement was taken out before you went to town meeting.
So you can now have two houses or more on any lot?
Yeah, you can have multiple, multiple ADUs on a lot with a primary, with principal dwelling.
Unbelievable.
Right.
But it is a special permit, though.
That would be a special permit. Multiple ADUs on a lot with a principal dwelling would be a special permit only for the second ADU. The first ADU is called a protected ADU, and that is a by right process. Once you go beyond one, you're into a special permit. Layers. There's a lot, there's a lot to this. So that is the summary of what the Attorney General came back. They said, yes, we partially.
What kind of conditions could you have in a special permit for the second one?
They don't get into a limitation on the number of conditions. Essentially, they, there's a difference between a special permit ADU and a protected-use ADU. That protected use is protected under 48, Section 3. But once you get into a special permit category, you default back to the statute and to the language within the zoning bylaw on determining whether or not to issue a special permit, impact on the neighborhood, impact on traffic, views and vistas, all of those things.
Okay.
So you would use those decision criteria in order to determine a special permit for multiple ADUs.
So this is the end of single-family of the one-acre lot size? Gone.
Gone.
Yes.
Gone.
Yes.
So you could turn down, under the special permit, based upon you didn't think that the lot had enough space on it to incorporate another unit?
Correct.
The second ADU?
Yes, only the second ADU.
No, I know that. The first one is by right.
Correct.
But it could be appealed to.
It could, it could. But you would want to follow, if that were going to be the case, you would want to follow that decision criteria. So part of the decision criteria, and I don't have it memorized, but one of the components is the effect on affordable housing. So again, the ADU is an attempt to help the affordable housing crisis. So you have this sort of issue with denying a second ADU based on the fact that it is trying to help with the affordable housing crisis. And I'm not saying you couldn't deny it, I'm just simply saying there are a set of decision criteria that you'd have to weigh when you decide whether or not to issue the special permit. But we haven't seen any of those yet. But so far, like I said, this ADU bylaw now takes effect, and it applies to any applicants that applied post the first notice of the public hearing that we, or that you publicized in order to go to town meeting in November. So that dates back to, I think, mid-August. So there was only one applicant that was affected by some of these changes, and we rectified that this evening in your decisions. So that's the good news. So we are under complete different rules for ADUs, as you've been talking about most of the night. And so we've been working with the town clerk to get it publicized in the newspaper, you know, the final decision by the AG. And then the next step will be to have General Code, who runs our e-code system, update the bylaw itself, and then we will have paper copies for everyone, likely in the clerk's office for people.
Would it make sense to give us a copy of what we can do, what is allowed now?
Yeah. Thank you for reminding me. So here are copies for everyone. Take one, pass it down. That is a clean version of the accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit bylaw as it stands now with all of the changes that the Attorney General required.
And then we're still going to adjust the town meeting? We're going to try to?
Yes.
What's the date of this?
That is effective today.
Today?
I wrote it today.
Awesome, thank you.
But again, it's effective as of mid-August of 2024. You don't need to really dive into that detail.
We're not going backward with the, okay.
What are we proposing to modify at town meeting?
You're jumping ahead to the next agenda item.
Oh, well, he just mentioned it, so I, he said it, not me.
Right.
Okay. Proposed potential zoning article for November 25, town meeting.
So while we're on the topic, we've been discussing the possibility of changing the ADUs from site plan review with you folks to just allowing the building commissioner to issue them as a building permit. And so that's gained some traction, I think, from, from the group. Again, when you get into the multiple ADU category, it would be a special permit with the planning board. So in order to make that law or rule, we would need to go back to town meeting and remove the site plan review requirement for the protected ADU. And while I'm on the topic, it's important to note in the Attorney General's approval that they have concerns about the, the process that a protected ADU would go through under our special permit rules and regulations. So we're pretty strict on what we would require, and they've got language in here that says, you know, you really should take a look at that carefully because what you're doing is creating a permitting process that's maybe too stringent for the protected ADUs as noted within the Affordable Homes Act. So I think, you know, professionally and personally, I think it's important to remove this extra step for homeowners who want to create an ADU. I think it would be a wise idea for the protected ones to simply just go to a building permit. It's a, it's a by right use that the building department's fully capable of taking on and approving.
It streamlines it, right?
Streamlining it.
Yep.
But again, only if you're comfortable with it.
Can I comment on that? I felt that way until tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
I now have a whole different opinion of what I saw tonight. I'm scared of what I saw, that people are doing these things without permits and running around and going crazy.
But a lot of what we heard tonight really had, had an issue with the building department.
Yeah, but that's who.
That's who's going to rectify these, these issues. And what I would suggest, if we're going to, we should read this, and this should be this discussion item next time.
Yeah.
Put it right on the agenda as a discussion item.
Yeah. So what we plan to do.
It's already 9:20 and.
Yeah, exactly.
And I plan on being out here by 8 o'clock.
In your dreams, Joe.
I want to run a fast meeting, but effective, so.
Yeah. So the other thing with the ADU bylaw, and again, this is, this is just stuff that we're working on in the background. If you're comfortable with it, we'll bring it forward with you guys. If you're not, just put it aside. But we also want to try to incorporate some of the language from the model bylaw that the, the executive office of Housing and Livable Communities provided to all the municipalities. the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities provided to all the municipalities. So it's got a lot of really helpful information, in my opinion, that could be added to the ADU bylaw. So stay tuned.
So we'll make a discussion item in the meantime. Any of us that have questions can...
I just think if we're going to have a discussion, is there any chance that we could have the building commissioner take part in this discussion of us, if we're going to turn it over to him?
I can ask him.
I'd rather not, but...
Yeah, right. I'd rather not.
Or not.
We should read this and have our questions and have our discussion.
And we can always decide later.
Okay.
We'll give it to the building commissioner after we see the first couple come through and get a sense of what are people going to do under the new rules, just so we're familiar with it. And then we could hand it along, maybe.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
I don't want to give it to him.
Right.
I want to hear, okay, I'll talk to him.
Okay, planning department report.
Well, so before we move on, so there's a couple of other things that we need to take care of. So the floodplain overlay district, as you see in your packet, that was identified as a need to update a total rewrite, almost. So I've been working with that and we plan to bring that forward for November. So the plan is to have some draft text for you at the next meeting, at least for you to just talk about. And then we can go forward with public hearings following that. We're also going to try to tackle the maximum building height table, so we've got some language in there that creates a little bit of confusion. We're going to try to clean that up. And then accessory structures, as you know, for lots over two acres, there's a special permit allowance for accessory structures to go up to 25 feet. But one of those items that is not allowed is accessory apartment. And we don't think that that's wise or enforceable at this point. So we're looking to delete that text as well. So just a quick highlight of some of the things that we're thinking about for town meeting.
But I'd just say there's been a change in the process of getting zoning articles ready to go to town meeting. For some time now, Pat and I have sat with a working group to go over the changes before they get to this board, so that we're kind of familiar with them before they get here. That's expensive because the consultants have to be there, they have to do all the work, they're going to do all the work anyway. And so that's not going to happen anymore. So when they get here, everyone on the board hasn't seen them before. So the process changed.
Yep. So as you can see on that paperwork, we've sort of taken the timeline and worked backwards from town meeting. So the idea would be to, at your next meeting, have a discussion item about these articles, give you at least some draft text to think about. And then we would talk about it again in early July. That way, everybody's comfortable before we start doing a public hearing, which would happen in later July. And we would allow for four hearings to happen if the public is really interested and, you know, it's a hot topic. And then we would submit our recommendations to the Select Words Office by 29th of September. And then we're off and running to November. Scary to think about when we're just about to get to summer, but this is what we do. We plan ahead. That's the idea. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, let me know.
Thank you.
Not much to mention on the planning department report. Obviously, we're working on the zoning amendments. We've been working on that for a long time. The planning board applications have really ticked up recently, so things are, they've gotten busier. They were somewhat slow last month and we're right back to where we were a few months ago. And I've been helping out Kim with some, as you may know, these town-owned land disposition RFPs. So at town meeting, voters approved the release of some of the town-owned land. So we're putting together RFPs so that we can actually get rid of it and sell it to, you know, a developer who's interested in creating affordable housing. So a lot's been going on. But that's it for planning department.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any committee reports?
Committee reports.
Yes. I want to be very brief on this, it's a very detailed presentation. Chuck Mortensen made a presentation at the Water calling management committee meeting last week. And basically, it's about 32 pages of slides and so forth. It's a draft final report that's being done by MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology Sloan School, and the Falmouth Marina Environmental Services on the status of the aquaculture program in Falmouth. There's an enormous amount of detail in here. And I can give you a larger version of it. I have to do four slides per page because it is so lengthy. Number of things, they have three pilot sites in Falmouth that are producing over a million shellfish per year. And when they expand that, and they had information from growers, marketplace people, regulatory institutional reforms, and the kinds of things they like to do. Finally, they're talking about the possibility of 60 sites in Falmouth in the next 10 years. So that's an enormous undertaking.
For aquaculture?
Aquaculture. And the key stakeholders are in the last slide, you can see who they are. But I'm not going to spend a lot of time. It's worth looking at and I didn't realize the extent of this program. And it is quite extensive and it is very interesting to read.
Thank you very much. Tom? Any other committee reports?
There's your report from the short-term rental group because they have not convened yet.
I believe the last member was recently appointed.
Last week.
I believe it was. So shortly, you should see an announcement for the first meeting.
Right here.
This is Charlotte.
Okay, is that it? I'll sign it?
Yeah, that's it.
I have just a short committee report, Cape Cod Commission. It's in our packets this evening, Thursday evening, 5:00, June 12th. We're going to have our opening hearing on the proposed solar farm at Cape Cod Country Club. And anyone in the public is welcome to join. Just go to the Cape Cod Commission website and we'll have our hearing, we'll take testimony, and we'll take testimony from the public also.
So it's a virtual meeting?
Virtual meeting.
Folks can just join right from the website.
And there's a good possibility I'm going to chair that hearing. To be determined.
Exciting.
That's it.
Also, don't forget, Falmouth Housing Partnership is hosting, adding housing to our neighborhoods with zoning reform. So this is tomorrow night at the Herman Room from 5:30 to 7:30. So there's some interesting ideas about how we can try to address some of this housing issues that the town's facing by some simple tweaks to the zoning. So I am planning on attending, Melinda and I, I believe Melinda's going. So if any of you are interested, feel free to stop by. 5:30, Herman Room.
Excellent. Anything else? Any motion?
I move adjournment.
Second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.